Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. And let me welcome you to the City of Tallahassee City Commission Meeting. It is September 11th, 2019 at 4:00 in the afternoon. I'd like to call this meeting to order. For the invocation today, I'd like to invite Pastor Jennifer Kopaz of Grace Lutheran Church to please join us for the invocation. Will you please stand?
Let us begin with a moment of silence to center ourselves and our hearts. As we gather together in this place, we commit ourselves to the work of loving, serving, and protecting this city, our home, to the very best of our abilities. We give thanks for all those here who have answered the call to serve the people of Tallahassee in this way, and we ask that they be given wisdom, compassion, and devotion for this work today and every day. May they keep the needs of this community at the heart of all that they do here, and may they have the courage to speak and the patience to listen, that the decisions they make might be in our best interest. In addition, today, as we mark the 18th anniversary of the September 11th attacks on our country, we pause to remember all those who died that day. The first responders who risked and even sacrificed their lives to save others. The untold number of civilians who stepped up to help each other in the aftermath of the attack, as well as all of those impacted in any way by this act of terror. And today, we also pause to remember all of those impacted and injured at the attack at Dyke Industries this morning. Finally, may those gathered here be faithful to the service to which they have been elected or appointed, and to the people of this community. May their work be a blessing for them and for us. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May be seated. Mr. City Manager, do we have any agenda modifications?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do. Item 5.03, 13.05, and 13.06 have been added to your original materials. Item 13.04 materials have been included with that agenda item that was originally published. We have updated the attachments on items 9.08 and 13.02. And finally, I would like to pull item 9.06, renumber it as item 10.01, to make a minor modification when we get to that point of the agenda in the recommended action. Again, that's 9.06 to become item 10.01. Thank you.
Excellent. Colleagues, any questions? Wonderful. Okay, we have three presentations, and I am going to ask the entire City Commission to please come join me down for these presentations, if you don't mind. And as my colleagues are coming to join me, I would like to ask Coach Shoup and the Athletic Director Eason and the FAMU baseball team to please come join us down front. Gentlemen, it is so good to see you. We are so proud of you. Ladies and gentlemen, the FAMU baseball team won the MEAC championship this year. Now, gentlemen, you need to know that when I was a kid growing up in Tallahassee, I used to go to Coach Shoup's baseball camp as well, but I never made it out of middle school. I just wasn't good enough. But Coach, it's great to see you and your staff and your team, and it is my honor to join my colleagues in the presentation of this proclamation from the governing body of the City of Tallahassee, a proclamation. Whereas the Florida Agricultural and Mechanical University baseball team defeated Norfolk State University 5-4 and 8-1, that's pretty solid, 8-1, to win the 2019 MEAC championship, and whereas it is the Rattlers' second NCAA regional appearance in the school's history, and whereas the Rattlers finished the 2018-2019 season with a conference record of 19-11, and whereas head coach Jamie Shoup, along with Coach Brian Henry, Coach Alec Wong, and Coach Anthony Robinson, have demonstrated excellent leadership and have been an exceptional role model for this team, and whereas the members of the Rattlers' baseball team, as I announce your name, please raise your hand, and I am going to do my best to get everybody's name pronounced absolutely correctly. Mr. Josh Barr, Tommy Ben, Chandler Benton, Eric Blanc Jr., William Brooks, Javon Byrd, Dylan Carlson, Chris Clark, Kyle Coleman, Ryan Coscarella, Pedro de los Rios, Jamie Grant, Josh Hancock, Brad Hyson, Connor Justin, Sewan Lawrence, Jake Lister, Dexter Martin, Brett Maxwell, Jeremiah McCollum, Willis McDaniel, Morgan Mendez, Malachi Mitchell, Zach Morea, Octavian Moyer, Tucker Rayburn, Casey Reese, Robert Robinson, Hunter Todd, Jared Weber, Jelani Wheeler, Jacob Weir, and Josh Wilson have all demonstrated what it means to be hardworking student athletes. Now therefore I, John Daly, along with my colleagues, by the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Tallahassee, do hereby recognize the Florida Agricultural and Mechanical University baseball team for winning the 2019 MEAC baseball championship dated today, September 11th, 2019. Gentlemen, congratulations. Coach.
Well, thank you, guys. We're certainly proud to be here. On behalf of our Athletic Director Dr. Eason, our President Dr. Robinson, we're certainly proud to be here representing FAMU athletics and FAMU University as well. Thank you to Mayor Daly and his staff for having us here in the Council Commission. I'm very proud of these young men. What they accomplish is something that's only been done twice in the history of FAMU athletics, FAMU baseball. So to do that, the first year, I don't think anybody was on that team, was it 2015 we did it, and then this past season going to the regional tournament, as I said, second time in school history. So couldn't be more proud of these young men as baseball players, but more importantly as who they are as individuals and how they grew throughout the season. The obstacles that they overcome, overcame this season were tremendous. I tell people, we started the season 0-6, and then endured that to go on to win the conference championship and go to Georgia Tech and play in the regional. So proud of these young men and what they accomplished on the field, but more importantly, how they've grown throughout the season, and I am so looking forward to following their careers after baseball and just seeing where their FAMU education, the Tallahassee community takes them. As I've always said, a better FAMU makes a better Tallahassee. So we certainly appreciate you guys being here today and the invite, and we appreciate all that you guys do for Tallahassee as well. Thank you.
Elaine, will you stay down with us? I'd say we do all three of these proclamations together. Curtis, will you stay with us? Diane, will you come join us? Let's do all three proclamations together as a commission. I would like to invite Chief Annette Brown, Captain Robert Clary, the Tallahassee Fire Department, and any other men and women of the Tallahassee Fire Department that are with us today as we celebrate Fire Prevention Week, and I think it is very appropriate as well on September 11th. First of all, let me tell you, I think I speak for the entire commission. We were all present this morning for the memorial service at the fire station, and y'all did an absolutely tremendous job, and thank you for everything that you do, day in and day out. I present this proclamation with my colleagues from the governing body of the City of Tallahassee, a proclamation. Whereas the City of Tallahassee is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting Tallahassee, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are where people are at the greatest risk from fire, and whereas when the smoke alarm sounds, residents may have less than two minutes to escape to safety, and whereas residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire, and whereas residents should make a home escape plan, drawing a map of each level of the home, showing all doors and windows, and whereas residents should practice the home fire escape drill at least twice a year, during the day and at night, and whereas residents should teach children to escape on their own in case adults can't help them, and whereas residents should make sure everyone in the home knows how to call 911 or the local emergency number from a cellphone or a neighbor's phone, and whereas residents in a real emergency should get low and go under the smoke to get out quickly, and whereas residents should get out and stay out, never going back inside the home for people, pets, and things, and whereas the 2019 Fire Prevention Week theme is "Not Every Hero Wears a Cape: Plan and Practice Your Escape" effectively serves to remind us that we need to take personal steps to increase our safety from fire. Now therefore I, John Daly, as Mayor of Tallahassee, with my colleagues on the City Commission, do hereby recognize October 6th through the 12th, 2019, as Fire Prevention Week in the City of Tallahassee, and we urge all residents to be aware of their surroundings, look for available ways out in the event of a fire and other emergencies, and respond when there is smoke alarm sounds by exiting the building immediately. And witness of each and every one of you dated today, September 11th, 2019, signed by me. I'd like to present this. Chief Gaines?
Mayor, City Commissioners, on behalf of the Tallahassee Fire Department, we'd like to thank you for recognizing this proclamation. The Fire Prevention Week was started in 1871 with the Great Chicago Fire, where lives were lost. We use this week as an educational tool for the city to gather information about fire safety, but in order for it to be effective, every member of the society must adhere to this fire safety message on a day-to-day basis. We thank you.
Thank you. I would like to ask Dr. Linda Fortenberry and all members of the Task Force for the removal of racially restrictive language in all residential covenants to please come forward and join us. So ladies and gentlemen, we live in a beautiful community, and we live in a wonderful city, but sometimes things are brought to our attention that remind us of the past. This summer, we had the unfortunate incident where an individual was in a private transaction, buying a house in a well-established neighborhood, a good neighborhood, and during that transaction it was identified that there is still racially tinged language that follows that property through the deed. This is something that we have been wrestling with as a commission, as a city, and as a community, and many communities, I believe. The truth is, the language is unenforceable. The truth is, the language is unconstitutional. The truth is, the language is tied to federal programs that were begun in the early 20th century, but nonetheless, they still exist. This task force came together and worked really hard on how we can bring this community together and how we can take formal steps to heal and to bring together the divide. And my commission, who I am so proud to stand with, we truly believe in the outcome that we have been able to come up with, and I'd like to provide this proclamation as well. From the governing body of the City of Tallahassee, a proclamation. Whereas the Federal Housing Administration created a program in 1934 that required racially restrictive language and restrictive covenants for developers to receive financial incentives for residential development. And whereas in 1948, in the landmark United States Supreme Court case, Shelley versus Kramer, the court held that enforcement of racially restrictive covenants violated the equal protection clause of the 14th Amendment of the United States Constitution, and therefore ruled that those covenants are unenforceable. And whereas in 1968, the Federal Fair Housing Act made the practice of writing racially restrictive covenants into recording instruments on residential property illegal, and whereas despite their unenforceability, racially restrictive covenants and instruments are still common and are being circulated to prospective purchasers of real property. And whereas racially restrictive language is offensive and is a painful reminder of this country's shadow of racial inequality and division, and whereas many homeowners and business owners still see the offensive language in the recording instruments because the language runs with the land, and there are currently no laws in place to remove or redact racially restrictive language. And whereas homeowners and business owners should not experience this reminder of racism and discrimination, the language should be removed or redacted from all the recording instruments on real property presented to real estate purchasers in the City of Tallahassee. And whereas it is to be in the best interest of the citizens and residents of the City of Tallahassee to adopt this resolution, now therefore be it resolved that racially restrictive language found in all recording instruments on real property in Tallahassee is offensive, unenforceable, illegal, unconstitutional, and hereby disavowed. In witness herof of each and every one of you, along with my colleagues, I have signed this proclamation dated September 11th, 2017. And before I ask for comments from Dr. Fortenberry, I want you to know that this is a resolution that was drafted by the task force, and I certainly appreciate your hard work and dedication. And we want to be the leaders as the city government, as the first, to pass this proclamation formally. Now, for those of you that are here and for those of you that are watching on TV, I want you to know that we also intend to proactively circulate this proclamation to all neighborhoods in Tallahassee and Leon County, so that neighborhood associations can also take the extra step on their neighborhood boards to pass the exact same language that we have signed as a proclamation tonight. As well, the City of Tallahassee has taken the extra step, and I want to congratulate our city attorney Cassandra Jackson and the members of the task force that also worked very hard. We have drafted a legal document called a Restrictive Covenant Modification, and while we do not have the authority on the local level to actually remove the offensive language out of an individual deed, if any landowner or homeowner that wants to go to the clerk of the court's office, they can file this language, this document, this legal document that will be provided for free from the City of Tallahassee upon request and through the neighborhood associations, that will forever be attached to their real property, so therefore when a transaction does appear, this language, the right language, the language disavowing the racial language, will be part of the official record. At this time, let me go ahead and present this proclamation to Dr. Fortenberry and ask for any comments.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, and to the members of the City Commission. I'm Linda Fortenberry, representing Dr. Arby Holmes, who is the chairman of our task force, and also the pastor of the historic Bethel Missionary Baptist Church, and we want to recognize the members of the task force who are here, Dr. Rivers, Attorney Jamie Coleman, Mr. Mario Taylor, Mike Breslin, and we also have 13 members who are part of this task force. And if I may just take this minute, because this is truly an historic moment in our city, because we firmly believe that if any city in these United States of America can find a positive way to remove the offensive racially restrictive language that was specifically cited in the Benton Hills covenant, it is this all-American city, Tallahassee, Florida. Mr. Mayor and members of this great commission, this proclamation this afternoon certifies that our city does indeed have the moral strength and courage to remove these divisive and hurtful words. Let us be clear that if attorneys, planners, realtors, politicians were able to find a way in 1939 to put these words into law, then we, in 2019, can find a way to put these words in action, and we are extremely blessed to have you as our capable and compassionate leaders, and we are thankful to each one of you for your long work in this community. And as the mayor has so articulately stated, we have come together today to say that now is the time to delete, remove, erase, and eliminate the divisive racist language and covenants across Florida that hurt communities psychologically, morally, and financially. City of Tallahassee, you have led the way, and now we will be a model for replication in other cities. This issue is worth pursuing as we exhibit the intestinal fortitude to stand up and speak out, not just for past injustices, not just for present unfairness, but exponentially we speak and stand up today for the depth and soul of future generations, and we thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to add, while we're getting set for the picture, it is my understanding, and you all correct me if I'm wrong, that Senator Mumford and Representative Osley will be filing legislation in the upcoming legislative session to also address this issue on the state level.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're on the time of the agenda for announcements, and I have a statement I'd like to read into the record. This morning around 8:30 a.m., the Tallahassee Police Department responded to a stabbing incident at Dyke Industries. Our police chief Steve Outlaw is on the, was on the scene, I think I just saw him walk in. Chief Outlaw, thank you for everything that you and the men and women of the task police department are doing. But we are on the scene, and we are continuing to investigate this incident of workplace violence, and we will continue to share the information as it becomes available. We are extremely thankful for the quick response by our police department, who responded within four minutes of the first call, along with the fire department and EMS. How ironic that today is September 11th, and once again they rose to the occasion to serve our community and to keep us safe. We have heard accounts of the heroism of other employees that kept this from being worse than it was, and we are grateful for the medical professionals at Tallahassee Memorial Healthcare Center as they care for the victims. Today, our hearts are with the victims and their families, and with the employees of Dyke Industries. In Tallahassee, we know all too well that no community is immune, but we know that this does not define our community, Tallahassee. As I'm sure many of you are aware, we are all shocked by this act of violence, and while we may not, well, excuse me, while we may be able to determine a motive that does not help us make sense of this horrific act. But today, as we remember the anniversary of the attacks on September 11th, 2001, we also remember a resolve in the strength of our community, Tallahassee community, that makes us stronger in times like today. I ask that you keep this community in your prayers, I ask that you keep those that are recovering at the hospital in your prayers, and I ask that you take a second for everything that has happened today and what we were honoring this morning with the anniversary of 9/11. Today has been an interesting day, to say the least. Folks, I'm also asking, as I do at the beginning of every meeting, that we have an incredible opportunity at this City Commission meeting to show everybody across the world who is watching that we are better, we can engage on the issues in a very civil manner, and we can conduct the business of the City of Tallahassee the way it's supposed to be done. So I'm asking, as you participate this evening, as you come to testify, please help us set the example on how civic engagement is supposed to be done right. With that, let's move forward with the business at hand. Do we have any other announcements, Mr. City Manager?
No, sir.
Do we have any citizens that wish to speak on any of the agendted items that have signed up to speak at this moment?
We do, Mayor. Most of them have selected to speak at the time of the item. Most of them are on policy formation, but we will hear from Dr. Hallifield at this time on item 905. That's one of your consent items.
Excellent. Dr. Hallifield, thank you for joining us, sir. Your name and address for the record, please.
And as he knows, but others may not, who are speaking, each person who speaks will have three minutes for your remarks. If you'd give us your name and address, there will be a light on the podium in front of you that's green, and then we'll ultimately turn yellow and then red at the three-minute mark. Thank you.
Dr. Hallifield, Longleaf Court, just for clarification, I also want to speak on an unagended
Yes, sir, I have that as well.
I no longer send I no longer send any articles to the Tallahassee Democrat. It took us a long time to get a black person on the editorial board, and that didn't happen until the 1990s, and it's gone back to an all-white editorial board. 1990, think about that. That's when we finally got the Nedra Carroll on the Democrat editorial board, and before then, there had been none, and we've gone back to none. So no more, you don't have to worry about reading any more letters from me. Curtis probably says, "Thank God." But in any event, I guess that only gives me four minutes, or three minutes if Curtis cuts me off.
Dr. Hallifield, please proceed.
But I want to, and to you, Mr. Mayor, the correct term is not racially tinged. The correct term to us is racist, and you need to be comfortable saying that, because they exist all around, even in 2019. But that's neither here or there for now. I just spoke to one of these five people, and I have a tremendous amount of respect for them, because I had a fire at my house on one occasion, and it was a bad fire, and to see them rush inside, it was actually a vehicle that caught on fire, it was incredible. I couldn't believe it. They had absolutely no concern for their own concern or for their own safety, and that vehicle was full of gas and could have exploded at any time. So I have the utmost respect. But what I want to talk about is this whole attitude toward first responders. Now, I think defibrillators are important. They can save lives, they can make CPR much more effective. But I asked one of these five people, I said, "Have you been provided with naloxone in all of your vehicles?" And the answer is, "No." And do y'all know what naloxone is? It reverses drug overdoses, whether it's heroin, fentanyl, it can be lifesaving.
You're at three minutes.
And, well, I need to finish what I'm saying.
If you could wrap up your thought, please.
Yeah, I need to finish this. Every police vehicle should carry naloxone for reversing drug overdoses. It can be lifesaving.
If you could please wrap up your comments.
Every vehicle, every fire truck should carry naloxone. And again, they need to be trained on how to use it. And I would like, before the evening gets over, for somebody to explain to me why this is not being done now.
Thank you, Dr. Hallifield. Certainly do appreciate it. And let me owe you a public apology. It has been a very trying day for myself, my colleagues, and the entire city of Tallahassee community. And you're right, I probably fumbled over my words during the proclamation. Let me be extremely clear, as an individual, as individuals, as a commission, and as a city, there is absolutely no place for any racism, period. And if I mince my words, I am very sorry, and I do apologize, but I wanted to make sure that we are very clear, and I very proudly stand with my colleagues in being the first in all communities to pass that proclamation denouncing that, and we will continue to work as hard as we can. So I'm sorry if I got my words mixed up, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Our next speaker, please.
We have no other speakers at this time. John Curtis is available if there are questions on item 907, but unless it gets pulled from consent, that won't be necessary.
Mr. City Manager, do we have any messages from the appointed boards, committees, or any other governments to come before this commission?
No, Mr. Mayor, we do not.
We are on the consent agenda item. Can you please remind us what has been pulled, once again, from the consent agenda?
Item 9.06, which is the approval of the fiscal year 2020 Florida Department of Transportation block grant and adopt resolution 19-r-23, has been pulled and moved to item 10.01.
Thank you. The Mayor Pro Tim has moved the consent agenda. It's been seconded by Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it passes unanimously. Commissioner Matlow, you look like you were leaning in for a comment.
I was just straightening my microphone.[950.12][950.12](LAUGHTER).
Absolutely, absolutely. Okay, Mr. City Manager, let's move to, you want to go ahead and deal with the item that was pulled from consent?
Yes, sir, I would. I'd like to invite Assistant City Manager Lavin Ford. We've got recent information from the Department of Transportation regarding the amount of the award which has not taken place, and so we want to adjust the recommended action for clarity tonight. I'll ask Mr. Lavin to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mayor and Commissioners, every year, the Florida Department of Transportation gives us funding through the Florida Public Transit Block Grant to help with operating costs for Star Metro. Usually by this time of the year, as we go through the budget process, we know the exact amount, but as of today, we do not know the exact amount. And so in an abundance of caution, we'd like to change the recommendation and the option to say up to an amount, which is what the Florida Department of Transportation has told us. They've indicated that we will be able to get up to $1.3 million. So I'd like to read the revised recommendation to say, "Adopt Resolution Number 19-r-23, authorizing acceptance of the grant in the amount of up to $1.3 million, and authorize the city manager and treasurer clerk to execute a public transit grant agreement on behalf of the city of Tallahassee with the Florida Department of Transportation and for the FY 2020 state public transit block grant allocation."
Do we have any public speakers on this item?
We have no speakers.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Well, first of all, Mr. Manager, well, thank you for bringing this to our attention. Is everyone clear on the amended recommendation from staff? Is there any comment, colleagues?
Move staff recommendations, Mayor.
The item's been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Commissioner Bryant. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it passes unanimously. That takes care of our consent agenda. We are now on the introduction of ordinances, number 12.01. Mr., excuse me, I'm sorry.
11, sir.
Yeah, we're actually city commission business.
Oh, we sure are. I'm so sorry about that. City Commission Business, item 11.01, please.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, item 1101 involves revisions to appointments to the Tallahassee Leon County Minority Women and Small Business Enterprise group. The terms for both LaRoderick E. McQueen and Brenda Williams are being revised. Mr. LaRoderick, I apologize, is being revised to April 2020, and Ms. Brenda Williams to April 2021. We recommend your approval of this action.
Do we have any public comment, Mr. Clerk?
No, sir.
Move acceptance of staff recommendation.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox, seconded by Commissioner Bryant. Any further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. Number 11.02, please.
Item 1102 recommends your appointment of Sherrell Jackson to the Downtown Improvement Authority with a term expiring May 31st, 2020. I believe Ms. Jackson may be in the audience. If you wave your hand, good to see you tonight, ma'am. We recommend your approval of this item.
Do we have any public comment?
No, sir.
Excellent. Commissioners, any comment?
Mr. Mayor, I want to commend Commissioner Matlow, because I think it was he that brought to our attention the fact that we did not have the diversity, the kind of diversity that we would like to see on the Downtown Improvement Authority Board, and so that is certainly addressed, and we congratulate you all for that and look forward to our continued partnership as we make our downtown second to none. And Commissioner Matlow, thank you for that.
So we're going to allow Commissioner Matlow to make the, oh, I'm sorry, another comment?
I just wanted to thank Ms. Jackson for stepping into this brave new place, and we look forward to working with you.
I'll move to appoint Sherrell Jackson to the DIA.
Commissioner Matlow has properly moved the staff recommendation, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tim, and Commissioner Matlow, thank you for your service representing us on the Downtown Improvement Authority. You're doing a tremendous job as well. Thank you. Ms. Jackson, congratulations. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. Item number 11.03, please.
Mr. Mayor, the city attorney will provide a little context. I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong item. I apologize. Item 1103 recommends your approval of appointment of Mayor Pro Tim Richardson as the city audit chair committee. This is, this is an administrative item. You will recall state law changed, which requires an elected official be on this committee, and this recommends Mayor Pro Tim Richardson's appointment to that committee.
Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment?
No, sir.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tim, thank you so very much for the work that you did. Certainly do appreciate it, and thank you for stepping up to the plate and serving. We appreciate it.[1264.03][1264.03](LAUGHTER). Absolutely.
Move staff recommendation.
Properly moved by Commissioner Matlow, seconded by Commissioner Bryant. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. Number 11.04, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This, this particular item, 11.04, discusses a recent letter that I received from Lawrence Keith, who is the United States Attorney for this area. As you're aware, the United States Attorney Lawrence Keith sent me a letter on August 28th as a result of an inquiry to his office stating and confirming the Department of Justice policy to take no position regarding the duties and responsibilities of this commission. Basically, what Mr. Lawrence, Mr. Keith was stating was that because the city of Tallahassee is a separate sovereign, it cannot take a position, and this is a standard policy of the Department of Justice. The same information I provided to you previously, and it is clear that the Department of Justice cannot tell you how to exercise your duties and responsibilities. However, as the United States Attorney stated, they should be exercised as you think necessary and appropriate. With this in mind, and based on my conversation with, conversations with the United States Attorney's Office, I have advised you to exercise restraint until you are reasonably certain that the investigation and litigation of matters regarding Mr. Maddox was complete. In my opinion, this could be as soon as the sentencing, which is anticipated for November 14th, 2019. In other words, I have advised you to avoid any possible interference with the investigation and the litigation, although it certainly would be well-intentioned if you decided to audit contracts related to Mr. Maddox. I'll be glad to address any questions you may have at this time.
Excellent. Do we have any public comment, Mr. Clerk?
No, sir.
Okay, excellent. So let's go ahead and open it up. Commissioner Matlow, I'll recognize you first.
Thank you. And first, I just want to recognize that this is a difficult conversation to have. It's a painful moment, I think, in Tallahassee's history. I'm thankful to be here today, serving with this commission, because I believe everybody up here is honorable and ethical and wants to get our city to where it needs to be. But we have to also face the facts that one of our community's worst fears was confirmed when former Commissioner Maddox entered a guilty plea, and that's that an elected local official was willing to sacrifice integrity for his personal gain. So I think as we scope this audit and decide exactly what we need to look into, we need to send a clear message as a city commission that we are not a city where you can come and buy favor, we're not a city where you can come and buy votes, and we're not a city where you can come and buy contracts. That's unacceptable behavior, and it doesn't just stop, it stops on both sides of it. So to vendors and companies that think that that's appropriate to do in our city, I think we need to let them know that we do not. As far as the scope of the audit, I love to hear recommendations from the auditor, but I think we need to look into, foremost on my mind are anybody who is engaged in payment for favor, who still is on the receiving end of city dollars, should be looked at. And I think as statement of facts come out and the FBI investigation rolls out, we have concrete evidence that we can use to operate upon. So I'd love to hear more about the scope of the audit, but I also think the Department of Justice, Scott Maddox, and several companies have all come to the same conclusion about some things that happened, and they're clearly illustrated in a statement of fact. So I also like to ask the city attorney, what would our options be if there are companies that have been identified, such as our waste services contract? Just authority of our board without engaging in an audit at all to, to say out of abundance of caution, if you came to our city making payments, we'd like to just rebid that and make sure everybody knows we're on a level playing field.
Ma'am Attorney.
Thank you. I have taken a look in particular at the waste management contract, and it does provide, like most of our contracts, for a termination for convenience. So if this board so desired, we could do a termination for convenience. It gives us an opportunity in doing it that way to make sure we secure appropriate services for the citizens of the city of Tallahassee, but allows us to terminate the contract for the reason, the reason, for the convenience of the government.
Excellent. Mr. Mayor Pro Tim.
Just a follow-up question on that. So, so if we were to do that, if it were terminated immediately, who then would provide waste collection services for the city of Tallahassee? Or how would, how would that work? Because I would certainly be concerned that we not have any disruption in those services.
And rightly so. If you do it for convenience, it provides a notice period. The contract provides that we would have to pay for, for services that have already been rendered, but we would also have the time, and I believe it's about six months, to sort of make sure we have a proper RFP process so that this could be carried out.
Yeah, we'd have to plan accordingly, make sure that we don't have a disruption in services moving forward. Mr. Sutton, our auditor, will you please come to the podium and talk to us about process? Okay. Commissioner Matlow, by the way, very well said, very well said, and I think that the commission is in line, that we want to make sure that everything is done well, right, above-board, and transparent. So the question is, how do we go from here, and what is, what is the recommended process?
Well, to begin with, I believe the recommendation would be to look at the statement of facts, as Commissioner Matlow pointed out, and work from there. But I do want to caution you that the city auditor's office is not independent of actions of the city commission, so that would put my office and myself in a tenuous position as far as potential credibility of any audit that we may take place. From there, we would look at the items in the statement of fact and audit the process involving how those contracts were let, and make sure that they were in accordance with policies, procedures, and everything was done within the staff's authority levels that they exercised.
So would it be fair to say that the first step, at least, is to, is to lay out the timeline by defining the scope and how the audit will be taking place? That would come back for formal ratification before this board?
Yes.
And I think in light of the message from the U.S. Attorney, that that is an appropriate direction for us to move forward, and so at the end, one motion for us to consider is to go ahead and instruct the auditor to put together the scope of work and the timeline for our next meeting for consideration, and that begins the process. My personal opinion, and I do not have a background in auditing, one of the items that we're going to do tonight is, is.
External audit.
Put together our external audit. I am very comfortable with you in your office doing the initial work, and if we do find something that needs additional attention, we have the resources and a second look through an external auditing firm that can either confirm, deny, or recommend moving forward, but it's an extra pair of eyes. But I personally don't see any reason why you shouldn't move forward with the perpere look, and we have the outside resources as well to move forward. And depending on how my colleagues feel, if that is the course that we go through, that is all part of the scope and the process that you will bring back to us for ratification at the next meeting.
Yes, sir.
Sounds good. So let's open it up for discussion. Yes, sir.
Just another question, and this is of the attorney, and so you don't have to stay for this. What would, what is our legal standing? Because I don't know that any companies have been indicted or their employees indicted for any wrongful or illegal behavior, yet we're talking now about potentially. for any wrongful or illegal behavior, yet we're talking now about potentially terminating legally binding contracts. So where would we stand legally if we went in that direction at this point, before we have all of the facts and evidence from the federal investigation?
Well, the contract that I spoke of is one that can be terminated for convenience. So it, it is just for the convenience of the government. It does not have to be pursuant to any process and procedure. Now, there, it also could be terminated for cause, but cause relates to how they performed under the agreement, so, and likely could not be terminated in that way. But for convenience of the government, it can be done. As for anyone else that may come up, I think you're going to be relying on a review of processes and procedures, of those procedures done or to be completed by the auditor, and you'll take a look at that and see if he has any recommendations, or if you have some in your consideration, and then we can explore what avenues might be available based on what comes out of the audit.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we aren't put at risk legally, and, and someone could potentially sue us, and then we're in a protracted, possibly expensive legal suit. So that, that was the basis for that.
And certainly, I would, I would not recommend that you terminate any contract except as pursuant to the agreement or, or law.
Okay. And so, and so there, I guess, would there be a likelihood, given the circumstances, that there might be other companies that would find themselves under, they just, in addition to the, the one or two that's already been mentioned, would find, might, could potentially find themselves in the same or a similar situation? And would it be prudent for us then to wait until we have all of the facts, aside from the scope? Because I think we can move forward with that, but would it be prudent for us, and based on your recommendation and an earlier recommendation from the U.S. Attorney, that we wait until all of the facts come from that investigation and we move forward from there? But, but direct our auditor to go ahead and begin the process of establishing the scope of what that review would look like.
I think that would be a prudent course of action.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Attorney.
Commissioner Williams Cox, you had a comment.
That was along my line of questioning, because I know that the U.S. Attorney's Office has a lot more resources and a lot more tools that they can utilize that we may not have at our fingertips. And so I was of the impression that let them deliver it to us on a silver platter, and then we go from there. So I think that's what I'm hearing, but in the meantime, we're preparing to be, to, to receive that information, and then we can proceed and not be starting to scope once we get it. I don't want to interfere, just call me fearful of the law. I don't want to interfere in a, in an investigation that we could then step into something that we didn't see coming. So I would, I, I, I like the course of action that we just discussed, whether the auditor can scope the project, scope it out, and then we can wait for the, all of the companies that, that were, were involved, that they will find, again, they have more resources, they can do some things that we can't do. And so we want to make sure that we utilize those available resources.
Dr. Bryant?
Yes, let me, let me just add my concurrence with the train of thought that we go ahead and do the scope, because I think if we have that in place, it's only probably a couple months from now that we will probably have a report. And then the application of what's in the scope will be for everyone that is revealed. And, and secondly, I want us to make sure that as we do this down the road, that we also protect the integrity of the city, of the organization, of the people who work here, such that they don't operate in fear for months and months, but we do whatever we're going to do expeditiously.
Sure. Mr. City Manager, in a second, I'm going to ask you to help us formulate a recommended, proposed motion for discussion and go from there. I, I agree with everything that's been said. Commissioner Matlow, I agree that we can get the ball rolling by scoping out the process and making sure that, that we are ready to move forward. I also agree with my colleagues that, and look, the timing is such that probably by the time we get done scoping this out, it'll be time to be able to move forward. I also want to agree with what was said in regards to caution, that we've got great men and women that work at the city of Tallahassee, and we've got great businesses in Tallahassee, and, you know, throughout the country that do business with the city. And this is not a witch hunt, this is not throwing stones, but this is simply making sure, cursory review through the auditor's office with the availability of an external auditor, auditing firm as well, to make sure that everything is done right, has been done right, transparent, and above board. And I think that is a great way for us to be able to help move this community forward. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Mayor, I would recommend that you take action on directing Auditor Sutton to prepare an audit scope based on the statement of facts included in the, the U.S. Attorney's indictment, present the scope and anticipated methodology to you for your approval. Based on my past understanding of developing these types of projects and scope, I would recommend that be brought back at your October 16th meeting so that it's thorough and complete, and Auditor Sutton can provide you a complete work product.
Questions, comment? Anybody willing to be the sponsor of that motion?
I would move, did you want to?
I'll second your motion.
I would move, I would move the city manager's recommendation.
Sounds great. Mr. Manager, are you clear on the motion that you just helped us craft and propose on the direction provided?
Crystal.
Wonderful. Commissioner Matlow has seconded. Commissioner Matlow.
And I just want to add an additional comment. At some point, we also need to make sure anybody who knows anything that wants to let us know that's outside of the scope, has a, a clear path of how, how to do so, how we can illustrate, you know, who to go to, who to talk to, if there's anything that anybody wants to bring to light.
Excellent. Wonderful. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Wonderful. Do we have any other business before the city commission under this item?
No, sir.
Excellent. All right, so commissioners, it is a couple minutes before 5:00. We do have a public hearing at 6:00. We will be taking some type of a break between now and then. We have the introduction of ordinance, and we have policy formation and direction, and my goal is to try to get us through as much as we possibly can before a quick dinner break and coming back. So now we are on item 12.01. Mrs. Attorney.
Thank you. So item number 12.01, introduction of ordinance number 19-0-21, and ordinance amending the general code of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, deleting section 21-181, amending section 21-402 relating to various rates and charges for sewer services, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. The first and only public hearing is scheduled for September 25th, 2019, at 6:00 PM in the city of Tallahassee City Commission chambers at City Hall. As should the record reflect that the ordinance has been introduced.
Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment?
Mayor, I have no speakers on this ordinance or any of the other ordinances to be introduced this evening.
Excellent. Any comment, commissioners? Staff recommendation's been moved by the mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Commissioner Matlow. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. 12.02, Madam Attorney.
Item number 12.02 is the introduction of ordinance number 19-0-31, and ordinance of the city commission of the city of Tallahassee amending section 2-227 of the Code of General Ordinances relating to Audit Committee, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. The first and only public hearing is scheduled for September 25th, 2019, at 6:00 PM in the city of Tallahassee City Commission, Commission chambers at City Hall. As should the record reflect that the ordinance was introduced.
We have no speaker cards. Is there anyone here to speak on this item? Seeing none. Commissioners, any comment? It's been properly moved by Commissioner Williams Cox, seconded by Commissioner Bryant. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. Item 12.03, please.
Item number 12.03 is the introduction of ordinance number 19-0-34, and ordinance of the city commission of the city of Tallahassee amending sections 10, 12, 13, 24, 27, 29, 45, 47, 48, 49, 50, 51, 52, and 65 of the charter of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, changing these sections to reflect gender neutrality, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. The first and only public hearing is scheduled for September 25th, 2019, at 6:00 PM in the city of Tallahassee City Commission chambers at City Hall. As should the record reflect that the ordinance was introduced.
We have no speaker cards. Is there anyone here from the public that wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none. Commissioners, comment? Seeing none. Commissioner Bryant moves the recommended action. Seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. No further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. Item 12.04, please.
Item number 12.04, introduction of ordinance number 19-Z-26, and ordinance of the city of Tallahassee amending the Southwood Plan Unit Development on the official zoning map of the city of Tallahassee, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. The first and only public hearing is scheduled for September 25th, 2019, at 6:00 PM in the city of Tallahassee City Commission chambers at City Hall. As should the record reflect that the ordinance was introduced.
We have no speaker cards on this item. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak? Seeing, yes, sir. Your name and address for the record, please, and if you wouldn't mind, after the fact, filling out a speaker card, that'd be great.
Yes, sir.
Thanks for joining us.
Thank you. Dan Hamidani, 36184 Oaks Boulevard. I, I'd like to request the the city planners and the permitting department consider requiring on-street parking on major road arteries of Southwood, such as Orange Avenue, Four Oaks Boulevard, Blerstone Road, South Blerstone Road, when, when the developer is asking for modification for the pods, which may be a, a good place to, to do, to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Certainly do appreciate it, and if you wouldn't mind, again, filling out a speaker card, that'd be fantastic. Madam Attorney, can you comment on those public comments that were made and how that fits into the process?
I think someone from planning might be better able to comment on those.
My point is, can we take the comments under consideration and still continue with the process moving forward?
Certainly.
Excellent. Sounds good. So, Mr. Manager, if we can have somebody from the planning department, please address those comments that were made, that'd be fantastic. Not, not necessarily right now, but please, yeah, as we move forward.
The way I'd like to handle it, of course, we'll, we'll address that and get some information on it, and if we can connect with the gentleman tonight would be good, too. I see Mr. Ben Pingery in the audience, to make sure we get the full information of what's been requested regarding the on-street parking, and just collaborate and share information, that'll be helpful. Thank you.
That'd be great. Is there anyone else from the public that's here that'd like to speak on this item? Any commissioner comments? Seeing none. The staff recommendation was properly moved by the mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Commissioner Matlow. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes, five zero. Item number 12.05, please.
Thank you. Item number 12.05 is introduction of ordinance number 19-Z-27, and ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, designating and including additional territory as an in-light industrial M1 on the official zoning map of the city of Tallahassee, adopted and established by the city commission, providing for conflicts and severability and providing an effective date. The first and only public hearing is scheduled for October 16th, 2019, at 6:00 PM in the city of Tallahassee City Commission chambers at City Hall. As should the record reflect that the ordinance was introduced.
Wonderful. We don't have any speaker cards, but is there anyone here from the general public that'd like to speak on this item? Commissioners, any comment?
Moving, except.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Williams Cox, seconded by Commissioner Bryant. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. Our final item on this section, 12.06.
Item number 12.06 is the introduction of ordinance number 19-Z-30, and ordinance of the city of Tallahassee amending the Maryland Oaks Crossing Plan Unit Development on the official zoning map of the city of Tallahassee, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. The first and only public hearing is scheduled for October 16th, 2019, at 6:00 PM in the city of Tallahassee City Committee, City Commission chambers at City Hall. As should the record reflect that the ordinance was introduced.
Thank you. We do not have any public speaker cards. Is there anyone here from the general public that'd like to speak on this item? Seeing, seeing none. It's been properly moved by the mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Commissioner Matlow. No further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. Thank you very much. We are on section 13, policy formation and direction. 13.01, please, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, I added item 13.01 to your agenda. It was requested by the Ethics Board, which, as you know, is an independent board. The city of Tallahassee provides certain administrative services, including HR, human resources services, and that the Ethics Board has asked to advertise the, the anticipated vacancy of the ethics officer. Based on that request, it would have included a potential double fill up to two months, which would have resulted in a fiscal impact. The Ethics Board has an approximate budget of $400,000 each year that's funded from the general, the general fund of the city. The double fill of up to two months would have had a $25,000 potential impact. Subsequent to posting the agenda item, I spoke to Ethics Officer Julie Meadows Keith. She indicated that it was not the intention of the board to double fill. That would not be the case, and that they would like to proceed with advertisement. I thought it appropriate to get Julie to provide us an overview of what she anticipates the advertisement to entail. So Julie's here tonight to share that overview.
Thank you so much for this opportunity, and good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Really quickly, City Manager Go did a great job of describing the situation. As you all probably know, although I report to, and this role will continue to report and be directed by the independent Ethics Board members, such board created by the will of the voters in 2014, the city administers the salary and benefits, office space, et cetera, for the role. The board, when I let them know it was time to do succession planning, which they had not done, because we're a two-person office, they were told the different options they had under the charter amendment, which is a part-time employee, a independent contractor, or someone with the same situation that, that I have. They voted that they would like to have a similar individual in the role from my successor. So the advertisement has been drafted, they have voted on it, and we are simply waiting for the job to post so the board can do its process. And its hiring process is going to entail about a 30-day advertisement on TalGov, and then on various job boards, LinkedIn, et cetera. They hope to have that posting for 30 days, bring in potential people to interview in November, and I've notified the board that my last meeting would be February 22nd. We don't anticipate the need to backfill. The board did have a desire for flexibility, meaning that if someone wanted to come a few days, maybe a week before, and shadow and kind of see what the job was about, we did not anticipate a two-month need. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, we certainly do appreciate the update. Thank you very much. And as you duly noted, the independent Ethics Board is independent of the city of Tallahassee. We do serve as the fiscal agent, we do pass the budget, but outside of that, you act independently of this board. I don't see any action before us tonight, but we appreciate the update.
Thank you so much.
While it was publicly advertised, do we have public comment on this item?
Mayor, we do have speakers on this item. The first is Erwin Jackson, he'll be followed by Bill Shack.
Great. Dr. Jackson, thank you for joining us. I hope that I was able to clarify the situation. There is no action before this commission, because we are simply the fiscal agents of the Ethics Board. It is an independent Ethics Board.
Absolutely. Erwin Jackson, 1341 Jackson Bluff. I was involved several years ago pushing for an Ethics Board. If you remember, first of all, I wanted to speak against this double billing. All right, that's what got me up here, one thing. We shouldn't be double billing. You, you're providing plenty of money. The person, Ethics Officer Keith, should have been fired. The person, uh, Ethics Officer Keith, uh, should have been fired a long time ago. Uh, she was appointed by the most corrupt City Commission, I think, in the history of this community, headed by Scott Maddox and Andrew Gillum. She, in her own way, her own mind, uh, decided to enter into a, a personal relationship with a city employee, and a person, a normal person, should understand that's a bad idea when you're in a supervisory capacity. She didn't see a problem there, a conflict there, an unethical issue there. Then, when that was exposed to the Ethics Commission, very similar to the previous Commission, with Rick Fernandez and whoever was here at the time, most of you folks who are new, except for Curtis Richardson, he should have been fired, Rick Fernandez. I gave them specific details of why he should be fired. No one wants to fire him. Let's make, let's make easy. Let's got, he's got a little bit more time to do to get his retirement benefits and this and that, da-da-da-da. When people steal from the city, when people make horrendous decisions to have relationships in a, in a, uh, with a city employee, that's simply wrong, and we need to stand up and say it's wrong and take action. So I came up here, one, I know it's not your job to fire. I understand that, but I'm hoping someone's looking here on TV. I had a couple of things we want to talk about later, because there seems to be a pattern. You find a person working for city government, they don't get fired, like Rick Fernandez. We want to ask him to quit when we got so much, and then we're going to pay him off. Well, I don't want to pay off this young lady. I didn't want to pay off Rick Fernandez. Let's just fire them, move on. I strongly encourage, I know you're not hiring, but I strongly encourage, we don't need an educator for an, for a Ethics Officer.
We have about 20 seconds.
We need a criminal investigator, not an educator. Most of us know what's right and wrong, what's unethical. We need someone with fortitude to point it out. Thank you so much.
Dr. Jackson, I certainly do appreciate it. Uh, again, as you know, we are simply the fiscal agents for the Independent Ethics Board. Uh, the hiring and firing and human resource aspects falls solely under the responsibility of the Ethics Board itself. The City of Tallahassee Commission does not have a role to play in that. We hear you loud and clear. We encourage you to go testify before the Ethics Board and make your comments known to them as well. But thanks for coming tonight. Certainly do appreciate it. Look forward to hearing from you in the future.
Next speaker is Bill Shack on this item, and he'll be followed by Ernie Payne.
Mr. Shack, good to see you. Your name and address for the record, please?
Bill Shack, 3109 Tipperary Drive, Tallahassee. Um, first, I want to commend y'all. I was at the blueprint meeting, and one of the things that you guys campaigned on was making, uh, our government more accessible, and you guys spent a very long time till 11:00 PM listening to the citizens, so I want to commend you on doing it correctly.
12:30 AM.
12:30. 12:30, but who's counting?
12:30, Bill.
Who's counting after seven hours? But, uh, so I want to commend y'all on doing that. Uh, you guys campaigned on doing that, and you certainly did. You also campaigned on, uh, on ethics transparency and, uh, to stop business as usual. And I, I am here to ask you guys to, um, go against staff recommendation and provide a alternative direction for this particular, um, item. It's 2014. The Ethics Board, um, started. The voters wanted it, and this is something that, um, we need to take serious, as you all said you would. The Ethics Board in June unanimously signed off on a host of new bylaws, including one that would require a simple majority rather than two-thirds vote to terminate the Ethics Officer. Um, they also had recommendations to change the bylaws, and we've delayed that. Um, I think it's very important that you guys not delay any more, uh, of this and, and accept their recommendations moving forward. Um, so I suggest that the Commission go against staff recommendation, um, of hiring a second Ethics Officer and move to accept Ms. Meadows Keith's resignation immediately and not at her choosing, so she may vest in retirement. Former City Manager Fernandez got to choose his fate, and I think that was wrong, and we can't let someone else choose their fate when they have ethical questions. Uh, we need to lead on this, and we need to make a decision now. So, thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you, Mr. Shack. I appreciate it, and thank you for coming and speaking. Let me again state for the record that the Independent Ethics Board is independent of the Tallahassee City Commission. We have no jurisdiction over the hiring and firing of any of the employees with the Ethics Board that supports the Ethics Board. We simply serve as the financial, fiscal agent of the Ethics Board by passing an annual budget. We do not have the say in the bylaws. That is set by the Ethics Board as well. Uh, Mr. Matlow, do you want to comment on point, or do you want to wait till we're through with public comment?
On, on your.
Okay. Commissioner Matlow, yes, sir.
Thank you, and I, and, and to your point, I'm, I'm just a little, um, I think we have lots of people who, um, may want to weigh in on their opinion of the Ethics Officer, but I'm unclear as to, since there's nothing for us to do here, why this is even an agenda item.
Correct.
As the City Manager, um, why this is included if we're not actually voting on anything.
I, I, yes, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, the Ethics Office advertises jobs to our HR since we provide that administrative service. Our HR Department was asked to advertise the job with the intention of the Ethics Board to double fill the position, which had a fiscal impact, which, so I recognize that if, if I advertised it and there was a double fill, the fiscal impact would not be approved by you, so I wanted to make sure this item was before you, uh, to have that consideration. Since the publication or publishing of the agenda item, the Ethics Officer has indicated that they don't, they won't do that, but that was not the initial request, and so that was why the agenda item was, was in front of you today.
And Commissioner Matlow, I agree 100%. There is no action before this Board, but simply because it was publicly advertised and people might have come down to speak on this, I figure we at least give them the opportunity to be heard on this issue. Do, how many more speaker cards do we have?
I have, uh, Ernie Payne is the last speaker I have.
Uh, Mr. Payne.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, yes, sir.
Just a quick question. Uh, is it my understanding that the Ethics Board itself has accepted the conditions of Ms. Meadows Keith's resignation?
Well, I believe Mr. Payne is a member of the Ethics Board and can answer that question for us.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Payne, your name and address for the record, please.
Ernie Payne, 2006 East Indian Head Drive. And, uh, yes, Ms. Meadows Keith submitted her resignation. Uh, we have accepted it at the terms as requested.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
As you know, I'm your sole representative, appointee, to the Tallahassee Ethics, Independent Ethics Board, and I come to you in that capacity. Not having cleared these remarks with the Board, I can't claim to speak for the Board as a whole. It was requested that this item be pulled from the agenda, as, as was noted. Uh, the Board did debate and vote for the two-month double fill transition period at the last meeting, with the idea that Ms. Meadows Keith's years of experience and institutional knowledge would ease the transition to the new Ethics Officer. But the, uh, the Board is also sensitive to fiscal reality. Uh, if the budget's not there, there are alternatives, and we can deal with that. But the fact that the item was publicly released and remained in its original form has led to confusion and misreporting in the press, inspiring verbal attacks on the Ethics Officer, as we've seen already. For the record, in the seven-plus months I've been serving on the Board and working with Ms. Meadows Keith, I've been impressed by her professionalism, her knowledge, her dedication, and her competence. I've also personally observed her performance of one of the most important parts of her job, training city staff in ethics matters. As a former trainer, I appreciate good pedagogy, and I saw it there. I will reiterate, the Board did not fire her or ask for her resignation. Soon we will have new Ethics Officers as well as a new Board Chair. It can be a good thing for any organization to periodically refresh itself with new personnel. I think the public appreciates the differences apparent in the City Commission from the way it looked a year ago, for instance. Much of the criticism that the public has for the Ethics Office will remain, however, until further changes are made. Currently, the Ethics Board is powerless to deal directly with most of the issues presented to it because of the jurisdiction limits placed upon it by the City Charter. Because the public doesn't fully understand this, the Office has developed a reputation for ineffectiveness, and justifiably so. This is the reason the Board recommended a dramatic revision of the Ethics Code in April, extending its jurisdiction significantly, in order to achieve the Ethics Office that the public thought they were voting for five years ago. I once again urge you to move forward with the revised Ethics Code with all deliberate speed. You may remember that this phrase was used by the Supreme Court back in the 1950s in the context of school desegregation. The country was damaged in those days because some areas, including Tallahassee, chose to overemphasize deliberation over speed, although both elements are important. I ask that you not repeat that error.
Mr. Payne, thank you, and let me tell you, I think I speak for all of us, since you were our appointee on the Ethics Board, how much we certainly do appreciate you serving on our behalf and doing the good work that you have been doing. Let me also reemphasize that we take this extremely serious, and that we are deliberating, and that we are going to pass a very strong, yet fair, uh, ethics package by the end of the year, uh, but this is not something that we do fly by night, and we're taking all recommendations, those by the Ethics Board, those that were made by a few of us, and those that were made by the public, all into full consideration, but we will bring this in for a landing, and we will pass an ethics package that we can all be proud of. But thanks for coming out, and you know what? You attend to all of our meetings, Ernie, and we appreciate that. We really do. Thank you. Any other public comment?
Don't forget his wife beside him. She comes as well.
Uh, we have no other speakers on this item, Mayor.
Excellent, excellent. Uh, we have no action. Does anybody have any, we're ready to move forward. Let's move forward. Okay. Next item of business before us is 13.02, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, this item involves an update to our energy risk management policy. That policy's been in place, originally adopted in 2002. A lot has changed in the marketplace in organizationally, and so it's time to update this. Uh, these are administrative revisions that do in fact represent how the current markets work and the organizational changes that have occurred, uh, within the City of Tallahassee. Rob McGarrett, General Manager of Electric and Gas, that would be one example of the change we've made over those years. He's here to answer any questions you might have on this item.
Wonderful.
Staff recommendations.
Do we have any public comment, Mr. Clerk?
No comment on 1302.
Excellent. Okay, uh, staff recommendation's been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. Seeing no further comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. Item number 13.03, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 13.03 is an update on the broadband fiber study that you directed staff to pursue earlier this year. You'll recall that you desired for us to work with our local academic institutions. Um, Christian Doolin and his team have worked diligently, and I've been very pleased with the results of engaging both Florida A&amp;M University and Florida State University. Um, in fact, I believe we have a student from the Florida A&amp;M SBI School with us tonight. We'll get her to introduce herself at the right time. Uh, but we've, we've embarked on this, uh, journey. We, the, the undergraduate program led by Dr. Black at, uh, Florida A&amp;M SBI has taken on the challenge to give us a report of, uh, digital access, the sometimes referred to as the digital divide. We anticipate that report to be completed and to be presented to you in December. We're looking forward to that. We've also worked extensively with the Ask You School, graduate-level program at Florida State University. We were not able to connect with, um, uh, with a project for this semester, but we're pretty optimistic we'll be able to connect with one for next semester. Of course, they work on a semester basis, on an academic basis. We have made considerable inroads, the relationships which you have strongly encouraged us to do with our academic institutions, and, and we wanted to give you an update tonight. I'd like Christian just to give us whatever points I might have missed and, and introduce us to, uh, uh, one of the young ladies that's going to help us understand this issue a little better. Christian?
Sure, and the only thing I would add is that this fall we'll be focused on accessibility. Uh, the team will be focused on, um, kind of a market analysis, doing surveys, looking at a take rate analysis on, um, kind of the demand, should the city have fiber, and, um, and maybe an overview of current discount access programs that exist in the market now. I'm going to turn it over to Amira to introduce herself.
Hi, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm Amira Span. I'm a fifth-year computer science major from Jacksonville, Florida. I'm also a freelance user experience designer, and I'm more than happy and very excited to work with the city on this project with two other people on my team, as well as Dr. Black. Thank you for having me tonight.
Hey, thank you, and thanks for helping us. We really do appreciate it.
And Amira's joined by, um, White Clef, who I saw compete at, um, at a Battle of the Brains, HBCU in South by Southwest, and also Zachary, who's on the O-line, so this team at FS, uh, FMU, so the team's going to be tackling, you gotta forgive me a pun, they're going to be tackling and blocking big things this semester. We're here to take any feedback or, um, questions you might have.
Questions, Mayor?
Absolutely.
Um, I know we, uh, Christian had talked about our industry partners being involved in this process. Have, what role have they played to this point, and if not, what do you anticipate the role of our industry partners to be going forward?
Sure, to date, and there were several mentioned in the item to date. Anyone who's approached the city to express partnership on the issue, we've sat down with, and we've let them know that we will be partnering with these university teams. We continue to look forward to doing that into 2020, um, and that we will be reaching out through the teams for any data they might have. So if those providers have, are willing to share, or those partners are willing to share any analytics they have on our market, any, um, kind of projections on where they might be interested, or their infrastructure they might have, so any data that they could offer the teams for their analysis, that would be, um, the primary role that we would be looking to partner.
Yeah. Well, I, I would hope, I mean, we, we specifically said we wanted to see them involved because they are, in many instances, providing services in the community, uh, and so I would hope that they would be integrally involved, uh, in this whole process, uh, and making, you know, recommendations to us. Uh, so i-if you would reach out to them to make sure that they are involved, I, because I recall that being the direction of the Commission when we originally had this discussion.
Absolutely.
Just want to make sure that that happens.
Before we go to public comment, any other question? I saw Commissioner Bryant first, Commissioner Williams, and Commissioner Matlow.
Let me follow up and ask. I think in, in the meeting, the Commission meeting, where we actually decided to include input, um, from the universities, uh, in our, uh, business industry, did we decide that, I better still, maybe I should ask, do we have a plan that takes us from where we are to where we're trying to go that has date-specific? I, I know we were unable in this semester, but we're anticipating our, uh, engagement with FSU in the next semester, but I don't want to be, uh, too many years down the road waiting on everyone to come to the table, uh, to get to an end place. So do we have that plan in place?
Commissioner, I'll answer that. Uh, we had hoped to be done by the end of the calendar year, and we won't be done by the end of the calendar year, but I think we'll have a lot of progress, uh, and so we, we've revisited that. I believe that will be spring, and I think probably as we develop these plans, there may be more analysis to do. I thi-I think we'll learn more, but, um, we had originally hoped to be done by the end of the calendar year. We weren't able to accomplish that, and we want to make sure we informed you of that now, but we think we'll make considerable progress and have good information for you in December.
Okay, great.
And continue on into 2020.
Commissioner Williams Cox.
I just wanted to point to, uh, in the material, in the agenda material, it does speak to the fact that on May 22nd, staff met with Comcast representatives, and, uh, they were, uh, provided information regarding the, um, approach, direction that we would be taking, and at that time, I'm just reading from this, at that time, the Comcast team agreed to be available to the student teams assigned to the project and provide irrelevant information. Staff also met with Point Broadband, a provider interested in expanding fiber and growing markets, so I think that the business community has been engaged, but if I was in business, I wouldn't be sitting around waiting for someone to contact me. I would be reaching out to see where things are, so that I can, uh, it's, it's two-way. So it's, it's incumbent upon business, if you're in business, to be in business, and you should also be reaching out to see what it is that you can do to make sure you stay a part of, um, of this process. I know that it's been a challenge, uh, trying to work with the universities because of schedules and because it became summertime and, uh, people were away, professors and, and what all were away, so it's been, you know, more than they can say grace over to harness, um, the, the students from Florida State and from Florida A&amp;M, so I'm glad to see that now that the fall is here, we're able to now have people more in a stable place where we can actually reach out, and I'm personally very proud of the fact that, uh, we're going to be working with Florida A&amp;M, uh, from the computer and information systems area, right, uh, which is where I graduated from, and so I'm very happy that we're engaged, and so I look forward to the report in, um, in, in December.
Wonderful. Commissioner Matlow?
Great, yeah, well, first, first off, uh, thank you for, um, ta-taking the project on, you know, it's something I think that's important, um, to this Commission as we talk about, um, broadband connectivity.
connectivity and access to fiber and where we are now and where we're going. It's an important question to ask, and I do agree with Commissioner Richardson. It was part of the directive to include our private sector partners. So I hope we reach out to them, bring them to the table, find out exactly what their investment plans are, where they want to go, where they have fiber, where they plan to put fiber. Because those are important questions for us to know, and I think, you know, if our private sector partners can answer those questions, it makes everybody, you know, we all want to get there together. So that would be a question. Thank you.
Great. Mr. Clerk, do we have any comments on this item?
We have no comments on this particular item.
Excellent. Commissioners, do we have any other comment? Staff recommendation for approval has been... Or staff to accept the update has been made by the Mayor Pro Tem.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Bryant. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. We are on item number 13.04, the approval of the co-location agreement with Gulf Power for North Florida Resilience Connection Transmission Line. In abundance of caution, I'm going to recuse myself due to my wife's law first, recently completing a project with FPL down in South Florida. In conversations with the city attorney, I don't have a direct conflict, but under state law, I don't want anybody to perceive that I have a conflict. So I'm going to pass the gavel to the Mayor Pro Tem and excuse myself from chambers. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, depending on how long this item goes, if you want to go ahead and break us for dinner afterwards, we can come back after that. So passing gavel.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. City Manager, you want to... Or is the attorney going to queue up?
I will.
Okay.
Yes, sir. If we're going to be very brief on this item, you know, much discussion has been had. This recommends your approval of the co-location agreement with Gulf Power for the North Florida Resiliency Connection Transmission Line. That's a mouthful. And the transmission line route in particular, provided for in the agreement. That's what we spent much time on. That's what you directed us on. And the picture that you see on the screen highlights the route that's in place today. You'll notice that blue line on the far right of the graphic, that's the eastern portion of Leon County, how it goes south of Tram Road, that was much discussed. So this does accomplish what you directed us to do, and we've been able to formalize that in an agreement. Rob McGarrett, I'd like to thank Rob for lots and lots of hours on this to make sure that it was done well. He and his team have done an excellent job. I'd like to recognize Tim Bryant with Gulf Power, Next Era. Tim and I have been in close communication. I think it has been a very professional conversation, and we recommend your approval of this item tonight.
Okay. Do we have any speakers on the item?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, we have a number of speakers, probably 10 or so.
Okay.
I will call the first one is Ray Brown. In the interest of the number of speakers, each speaker does have three minutes to make remarks and certainly use those as you wish, but we'll let you know that the commission has looked at this extensively. So if you think exactly like the person before, you may not need to use three minutes, but you may be able to briefly register your position on the item. With that, go right ahead.
Mr. Brown, if you would give us your name and address for the record, you do have three minutes. How you doing?
Ray Brown, 6452, Mary Lake Court, Tallahassee. Mr. Mayor in his absence, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, as well as Mr. Reese, thank you all for giving me this opportunity to come up before you. My understanding that the approval, the co-location, are we approving that? Or we're saying that we're going to address it later?
It's for approval on the agenda tonight.
Oh, okay. That's...
That's the action. We will consider that for action tonight as approval. That's what staff has recommended.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you so much for your opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Now, our next speaker, Mr. Cook.
Next speaker is Leslie Steele, followed by Casey Stevens.
Well, hello there, Mr. Steele. Good to see you.
Good evening. Leslie Steele, 265 Sand Pine Drive, Midway, Florida. I came to the meeting tonight just to observe and to see the things as we went through Hurricane Michael as one who served in a city manager role. I've been impressed with Mr. Gold. I hadn't had an opportunity to meet him yet, but it seems as if this has been thoroughly vetted and it would be good in case this is something that would have come down the road to our end of the county. I wanted to see it. So I'm standing in support of this, and I thank you all for what you do. I want to thank my mentors, Ms. Ian Williams Cox and Ms. Bryant, and of course, Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Leslie.
Next speaker is Casey Stevens, followed by Ryan Terrell.
Craig, come on up. Sorry about that.
Yes, indeed it is.
We're glad to have you. If you would say that into the microphone so it's recorded for posterity.
Yes, sir. Craig Stevens, 1630 Alberta Drive.
Thank you, Craig.
I basically wanted to say that it's been a great opportunity to see the designs and the ethnics that was put into this, and at that point, I wave in support.
Thank you, Craig.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming this evening. Okay. Next speaker, Mr. Cook.
Next speaker, Ryan Terrell, and then Timothy Bryant.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you all this evening, members of the commission, Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor. I came here tonight to...
Mr. Terrell, your name is...
Ryan Terrell, 1120 Co-Landing Road.
Okay, thank you.
So I wanted to just quickly talk about a few things with this project and why I think that the commission should move forward with it and vote for the agenda item. As we know, yesterday was the 11th month anniversary of Hurricane Michael. We have seen extensive damage to our North Florida community. Some of our residents still are living in tents. Some of them are still displeased and recovering. This is a project that would help build our resiliency here in North Florida. It would allow us to better prepare and better prevent damage that would occur. And y'all have put in a tremendous amount of work. I commend staff for doing that and for working out a lot of the issues that we've seen brought up in places like Jefferson and our South Leon County folks. So I think that they've done a lot of progress in fixing that, and I'd ask you to move forward with the agenda item and vote for it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Terrell. Our next speaker.
The next speaker is Timothy Bryant. He'll be followed by Charlotte Barber. Mr. Bryant, wait. Bryant, wait, okay.
You wave in support.
Yeah, just...
Okay, all right. Next speaker, Mr. Cook.
Next speaker is Charlotte Barber, and then Mark Bell.
Hello, Ms. Barber. Thank you so much for coming out this evening. If you give us your name and address for the record.
Charlotte Barber, 2901 Springfield Drive. I am a recent resident moving to Tallahassee about four years ago, coming from Orlando, which the environment, planning for the environment is nothing like we have here. So I wave in support of this amendment.
Thank you, Ms. Barber, for so much. Our next speaker, Mr. Cook.
Next speaker is Mark Bell, and then Linda Bell.
Mark, okay.
Thank you.
Is this a tag team?
Yes, sir.
All right.
The better-looking ones coming after me.
And the one with the most brains, right? Mark didn't agree with that one. No, but thank you for coming.
My name is Mark Bell. My address is 19690 Crowes Lane, Tallahassee, Florida. I'm in support of the project.
Great.
I was talking with some of my church members last night. In fact, I skipped church prayer meeting tonight to be here, but I was talking with some of my church members last night, and they are in support of this. And we're out west, which is directly affected by this transmission line. But the proposed pass seems like the best one possible for everybody. I think it's a win-win for the city. I'm in support of the idea, and I hope you guys move it forward. Thank you very much.
That means a lot to us, Mark. Thank you so much.
Now, Linda Bell.
Linda, come on up. Thank you for being here this evening as well.
She'll be followed by Greta Case.
Good evening, Linda Bell, 19690 Crowes Lane, Tallahassee, 32310. This project directly affects us both where we live and where I'm the city manager of, so I want to speak in support of it. You know, it's said that a good preacher always gives a three-point sermon, sort of a three-point proponent discussion. It's beneficial for both Tallahassee and Leon County residents. It's good for the rural customers to our west in the Panhandle to have access to and benefit from lower electric rates, especially given what we experienced 11 months ago in Hurricane Michael. Every county line, every county the lines go through will benefit from the tax revenues. This is good for the local community and our Panhandle neighbors, and it just makes sense. Thank you so much. Have a wonderful...
And where are you, the city manager?
Sneed's in Jackson County. Devastated by Hurricane Michael.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your work.
Thank you. We appreciate you and the work you do in Sneed's.
Thank you. We appreciate every one of you.
Okay.
God bless.
All right. Our next speaker, Mr. Cook.
Next speaker is Greta Case. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, that's the last speaker card I have on this item, and I don't see any others coming my way.
All right. Ms. Case, come on up. Give us your name and address for the record, please, and you'll have three minutes.
Greta Case, 830 Horsehead Road, Wasissa.
Okay.
Next, I'd like to thank especially Jeremy Matlow and you, Curtis Richardson, for your help in getting it off the main part of Tram Road, coming right down through the middle of Wasissa. However, it's still coming down Wakina Highway, which is a two-lane country highway. It's going north through Thompson Valley Community. What Next Era has done in their presentation to the residents to get their land has been hurtful. The word dishonest, shady, not upfront, has been used more than once, especially if you were at the Jefferson County Commission meetings. Nobody was really given much information from Next Era. I own property, which apparently they're now going to be going across, and I've not gotten anything from them. So I would really... I'm not in favor of your co-location to benefit Leon County and the counties to the west. What I'm saying is the counties to the east, they're just ramrodding through Jefferson County. And we oppose that.
Thank you for sharing that with us. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Case.
That's the last speaker I have.
Last speaker? Okay. Did you want to speak on this item?
If possible.
Okay, yeah. If you would give us your name and address and fill out a speaker card when you're done, please.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, he spoke previously. I'll simply add this item to his speaker card, and that'll take care of that.
Okay, all right. Well, you're set. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes. Dan Hamidana, 3618 Oros Boulevard. If I share the sentiment with the lady who just spoke before me, and I understand that the power line comes through I-10, then it takes a bypass from the I-10 and it comes Into through the Jefferson Wakina Highway and then comes through the Tram Road. That area is impacted, will be impacted by this line. And I am wondering, when the... There's more infrastructure and more width of highway on I-10, why was I-10 bypassed? And why the line did not continue through I-10 to go through Tallahassee? And I was wondering if that could be considered as an opportunity for the line to go through the Tallahassee, just continue with it through the I-10. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Move acceptance of staff recommendation.
Okay, there's a motion by Commissioner Williams Cox.
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Bryant. Any discussion? Commissioner Matlow?
Well, first off, thank you to the hard work of city staff for getting us closer to what we asked for, to look out for residents in Tallahassee, but also Leon County. I did just have one question because I don't like getting new information on the day of a meeting. There was a newspaper story that ran a couple hours before we got here in regards to a DEP decision and questions they had, and I wanted to see how that may affect anything we're doing here today.
Mr. City Manager?
I'm not familiar with that. Rob McGarrett may be.
Commissioner, I saw the same article right before I came down here. And we're not part of the permitting process, but I can just talk in general how the DEP permitting process works. When you submit an application for a project with DEP, they do a review to see if it's got all the information that they need to make a decision. It is not uncommon to have an incomplete notice, or what you would hear is a request for additional information, an RAI, where they would come back to the permit applicant and say, "We need these additional pieces of information in order to fulfill their obligation to review the permit application." So not knowing the details from a process perspective, it's not surprising that you might see an RAI. Tim may be able to provide some additional information on the details of RAIs that were asked.
Okay. Mr. Bryant, your name and address for the record. Thank you for being here this afternoon.
Timothy Bryant, Gulf Power Company, One Energy Place, Pensacola, Florida. And Mr. McGarrett, he very well demonstrated or communicated, rather, the process of the DEP as it reviews applications, and the comments that were shown in the Democrat article are accurate. That is part of process. So the DEP will accept our application, any other's application, review it, and if there are questions, it's not uncommon for them to ask for requests for additional information, which they have of us, and we expect to that. So that's nothing that's out of the ordinary and clearly does not impact this co-location agreement at all, has completely nothing to do with it. However, it is part of the environmental application review process that we were prepared for, quite honestly. As we submitted the application about a month ago, we knew there were additional details that we were still working on that the DEP could ask for, and that is part of process. So there are no concerns related to the request for additional information as it relates to this agreement and the moving forward of this project.
Okay. Commissioner Matlow, follow up?
No.
Any other questions by commissioners? The motion has been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously with the mayor being out of chambers on a cautionary note for... To avoid any perceived conflict of interest. I'm going to ask if the mayor could come back into the chamber, because I can't carry this next motion because I was the chairman of the committee. Here he is.
Mr. Mayor, I would recommend, we've got two policy items. We can easily take them up at the conclusion of your public hearings. If you want to take a short break and reconvene at six, I think that's appropriate.
Yeah.
Sounds great.
12 minutes.
Yes, we are in recess.
Yes, we, we, we are in recess.
Sorry, we are running a little bit late. It is 6:12, and I'd like to call the September 11th, 2019 City Commission Public Hearing to Order. On the agenda, ladies and gentlemen, we're on 15.01, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to invite our Director of Financial Resources forward. Item 15.01 is the first of two public hearings on the fiscal year 20 budget. You know you've discussed the budget many times over the course of the year and given good feedback and leadership so we can get to this point. We wanted to provide a short presentation that kind of highlights the elements of the budget, and I'll probably steal a little bit of Robert's script here. At the conclusion of it, there is a very precise process that has to be followed. The city attorney will walk us through that once we have the presentation and you answer any questions you might have. So with that, I'll turn it over to Robert.
Robert, thank you.
Thank you, Reese. Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, appointed officials. Tonight's the next step in a year-long process that we've been through together. It's the eighth meeting, and in two weeks, we'll have the ninth meeting to talk about the fiscal year 20 budget. We want to work through and accomplish the following things tonight. We're going to receive public input on the fiscal year 20 proposed budget, on the millage rate, on the operating and capital budgets for both the city and for the Downtown Improvement Authority. We're asking also that you adopt the tentative millage rates, operating and capital budgets, also for the city and the Downtown Improvement Authority. One other action that we will take tonight is to approve employee health plan rates for fiscal year 20, which we received final numbers in July. We also then will also adopt Resolutions 19R-33, 35, and 36, which are approving the updated solid waste rates, growth management pass-through fees, and planning department fees. And we appreciate your patience as we go through what will seem like a repetitive process. Fortunately, we have the city attorney here who will guide us through that process as the city manager mentioned. Today, and I guess I've got the controls, as you well know, the budget is $161.4 million general fund budget, a $740.7 million citywide operating budget, and $158.8 million capital budget. You're well familiar with the items that we've listed here as highlights of the budget that encompass public safety, an additional $2.1 million in investment in police technology, a million-dollar increase in police salaries, quite a bit of effort for public infrastructure, $14.3 million that you directed us to devote to sidewalks, and a commitment to fund 10 new sidewalks a year for the next five years. That is coordinating funding with the CRA and Blueprint along with city funding. There's additional $6.5 million in sidewalks, roads, airport facilities with matching grants, and $93 million investment in utilities, our electric, gas, water, sewer, and stormwater capital program. The balanced budget also includes a $1.5 million increased investment in the city and county-wide fire services program, as well as an expansion of the fire ALS coverage area to address increased EMS calls. We discussed this issue earlier in the year. And most importantly, we've devoted nearly $5.5 million between ourselves and the county towards human service efforts. You'll see that we've addressed outside agency direct grant funding of almost $800,000, $3.5 million between the city and the county, where $2.1 million of the city effort goes toward city organizations that provide direct human service provision. And then we've got our CHSP and direct city grants that provide over $900,000 combined for the Kearney Center and Hope Community, supporting 500 to 600 homeless people a night. The fiscal year 20 budget also ensures that we are not only addressing the highest priorities, but that we're also cost-effective and efficient, and we've continued to show that when we've compared ourselves against similar communities that provide similar services, as we have pointed out, that we have got the lowest millage rate that was adopted, that was proposed in July, the highest service territory that we provide service to, and also the greatest population among those other 10 communities. And so again, great credit to the departments and the funds to come together. Since July, a couple new items of information. I mentioned the updates to the healthcare plan. We're fortunate in working with Capital Health Plan and Blue Cross Blue Shield to see a 3.7% increase in our healthcare rates. That's the lowest that we've seen in the last five years, and so that's very encouraging. We are proposing that we adopt Option 1, which is the Big Ben Choice Plan, and Option 2 was proposed, but it included higher co-pays for emergency room visits, and it was shifting an unfair burden to just a very few number of our employees, and so we're recommending Option 1. We're also able to maintain the cost sharing between the city for what we pay for healthcare plan costs and for what the employees pay on a 70/30 split across the three types of plans. We also got somewhat good news in that we saw an increase in the state of Florida half-cent sales tax in June, but also a downward trend in the revenue sharing. We used that additional $162,000 to respond to the request for additional outside agency funding and finalize tempo positions with that additional revenue to balance the budget. This is an overview that we provide that shows the 14 operating funds that we've talked about for the last year. The general fund, $161 million, includes TPD at $60 million, Parks and Recreation, Roads, Streets, Human Services. I'll point out the Fire Services fee, which is a separate cost recovery effort that we make for fire, includes those increased service levels that I referenced earlier. You'll notice as we go down the chart that shows each of the funds, what their operating budget is, what their capital budget is, the revenue source, and the description. This is a very nice summary in order to provide transparency of what the 14 operating funds consist of. In the case of electric, gas, water, sewer, we are able to transfer from those funds to help balance the general fund. As we go to the right-hand chart and look also at aviation, I'll point out the $13.3 million in their operating budget and the $12 million in their capital budget. That's to leverage federal and state grants that we're actively pursuing right now. Another interesting item, stormwater is listed there, is $18.6 million in operating expense. That includes our drainage and street sweeping and our engineering services. And then we've got a capital program of $11.3 million for stormwater projects and water quality projects. Recent discussion showed that we have had about 184 water quality projects over the last 10 years, and so that continues, that focus and that trend. One aspect, we on a recurring basis rotate through rate studies. We've been talking about a solid waste rate study as part of this four-to-five-year period, the cycle that we've completed, and we work with Leidos Engineering to conduct that rate study. The results of that rate study was implemented because in 2016 it identified need, and 2018 we went through 2018 and 19 using reserves to balance the budget. The rate study that we have before you addresses the period from 2020 through 2023, and the primary drivers of that rate change are contract collection expense, landfill and transport cost, and a net increase in recycling, about a $2 million deficit, and so this rate study will address that. Residential rates will continue to be competitive at less than $20 a month. I think it's very remarkable that we've got such a high level of customer service in our solid waste utility with weekly pickup of garbage rather than every two weeks like a lot of the comparison communities that we use. We've got weekly pickup of recycling and then bulk pickup every other week for bulky items and also for yard waste. So when we look at cost, it's important to consider that high level of service that we're maintaining. The other aspect of this that I'd like to commend the Solid Waste Department is they've gone through three consecutive years with hurricane, so managing that debris operation, going through a rate study, and now finding the room to maintain the rates and the high level of service is very commendable and a credit to the Department Director, Reginald O'Fwone. That strong commitment to recycling that I mentioned, our community is totally engaged in recycling, and we don't want to discourage that, and so that's why we've reflected that in our rates. And we're also, as part of this rate study, proposing to increase the size of containers for recycling to meet the demand and expectations of our community, and that's considered in this rate study. Graphically depicting the rate study, we've got a bar graph that shows residential service. It's curbside solid waste, an average monthly bill for residential customers. You'll notice that the green bar for $18.37 as compared to the $19.91 represents a $1.54 increase between where the rates were and where the rates are proposed. And as I mentioned, those rates include recycling, the cost to transport to the landfill, and other contract costs. Our solid waste study also looked at our commercial rates. This bar chart shows a typical commercial service of eight cubic yards, weekly service with dumpster pickup one time each week. We will remain the lowest commercial rate in those comparable other communities. Commercial rates are very difficult because it's different-sized containers, it's different-sized delivery methods, it's different pickup methods, but we feel like this is representative of those who provide that service in a similar fashion, and so we're proud that we're keeping that rate at the lowest among those comparables. Ultimately, those are the changes that we have seen since June and July, the solid waste rates, the healthcare rates, and we're asking, as you go through this process, that the city manager will walk you through a legislatively-directed process. She will feel like she's repeating herself at times, but there are things that we need to read into the record. Unless there are any questions immediately from that presentation, it gives us the opportunity to go through the process and open up the public hearings and take the votes that are necessary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Attorney, let's walk through the process here.
Excellent. As noted in the agenda, resolution numbers 19-R-33, solid waste rates, 19-R-35, growth management pass-through fees, and 19-R-36, planning department pass-through fees, will be introduced for approval as a part of this item 15.01, the initial public hearing on the city budget for FY '20. Resolution number 19-R-33, solid waste rates incorporates the result of a rate study. Resolutions 19-R-35, growth management pass-through fees, and 19-R-36, planning department pass-through fees, represent a change to one part of the fee schedule to allow for pass-through costs. There are several steps that we have to go through tonight pursuant to the Truth and Millage Act. The Truth and Millage Act requires certain steps in a certain order, and that certain things must be read into the record. Those steps are in the agenda item if you want to follow there, but the first item is to read the following into the record. The proposed millage rate for fiscal year 2020 is 4.1 mills for the City of Tallahassee and 1 mill for the Tallahassee Downtown Improvement Authority, which millage rate is more than the aggregate rollback rate of 3.9454 by 3.90%. This tentative millage rate is equal to last year's rate of 4.1 mills. Resolution number 19-R-37, which is provided to state the percentage that the tentative rate is more than the rollback rate, is in Attachment 1. The next two steps are to allow public input on the city's proposed millage and the city's proposed budget. If people have turned in speaker slips, they can speak on either the proposed millage or the proposed budget for the city at this time. In compliance with Florida Statute Section 200.065, the date of this hearing was included in the trim notice, which was mailed to all property owners by the Leon County Property Appraiser. At this time, we'll call for public speakers on the city's proposed millage.
Mr. Clerk, do we have any speaker cards?
We do not have any speakers.
Is there anyone here from the general public that would like to provide comment on either the proposed millage rate or the proposed budget? Moving forward, Madam Attorney.
Thank you. That concludes the public input on the city's proposed millage and the city's proposed budget, unless there are other speakers on these items. The next steps, four and five, are to allow public input on the Downtown Improvement Authority's proposed millage of 1 mill and the Downtown Improvement Authority's proposed budget. In compliance with Florida Statute Section 200.065, the date of this hearing was also included in the trim notice, which was mailed to all property owners by the County Property Appraiser. At this time, we'll call for speakers on the Downtown Improvement Authority's proposed millage and the proposed budget.
Mr. Clerk, do we have any speaker cards?
We do not have speakers.
Is there anyone here from the general public that would like to speak to the proposed millage rate for the Downtown Improvement Authority or the budget as proposed for the Downtown Improvement Authority? Would you please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, please? Good evening, thanks for joining us.
Good evening. My name's Jordan Scott. I live at 2291 Hartsfield Way, Tallahassee, Florida, 32303. I just want, if you could just briefly go in what is the role of the Downtown Improvement Authority? Is that something you could cover just briefly?
Absolutely. And Mr. Scott, thank you for joining us. We are actually blessed with the Executive Director of the Downtown Improvement Authority who is here tonight. Ms. Emanuel, I'm going to invite you to come to the podium, and if you wouldn't mind publicly giving a brief synopsis of what is the role of the Downtown Improvement Authority here in Tallahassee. And Mr. Scott, if you wouldn't mind, when you get a chance to fill out a speaker card for the record, that'd be great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, thank you all for the opportunity to share more about what the Downtown Improvement Authority does. We are a quasi-governmental entity, as evidenced by the fact that we're here tonight approving our budget. Our goal is to make downtown Tallahassee a place that provides entertainment, education, ongoing resources available to all of our community. So we do that through a number of different things, from events that are free. We hope you all join us. We hope you all join us, not only on Thursday for yoga at 6:00, but on Saturday mornings for our marketplace that boasts an opportunity for entrepreneurs to come out and sell produce, locally made goods. We have that 42 times a year, and that is Saturday from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM in Ponstaleon Park. And then Saturday evening, we'll actually have a sundown concert series, which again is free and open to the public. That is featuring Royce Lovett. He's a great local musician. And the opening band is the Commentators Funk Band and the Turn Ups, and they're a great local band as well. So that brings thousands of community members into Cascades Park, 7:00 to 10:00 PM. In addition to those free events, we also advocate on behalf of our downtown businesses, ensuring that things operate smoothly and that their concerns and their challenges and their assets are presented to our community. We've got great downtown restaurants and a number of businesses, 630 within our district. And then in addition, we really promote the good things that we have going on in downtown Tallahassee. We feel that our downtown is the heart of our community. It is a great place for everyone. And these 1 millage rate is half of our budget. The rest is done from fundraising, which is where predominantly the cost for these free events and other things come from. So we certainly appreciate both the support of the city as well as those fundraisers that help make all of this possible.
Great. Thank you.
And you also have a citizen governing board?
We do, indeed. And we're really excited that we just had our newest member appointed by the commission this evening. And those are all citizens that volunteer their time to serve on our board. So we're very grateful for that.
Excellent. Ms. Manuel, I'll ask if Mr. Scott has any other questions. If you can please help him and answer him offline. Is there any other, any other questions for Ms. Manuel while she's here? Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Do we have any other public comment on the proposed millage rate for the Downtown Improvement Authority or the proposed budget for the Downtown Improvement Authority? Okay. Madam Attorney.
So the public hearing process is completed for today, and there have been no adjustments to the budget. So I would ask for a motion to approve the city's tentative millage rate of 4.1 mills as set forth in Resolution Number 19-r-37, and publicly announce that the proposed aggregate millage rate is more than the rollback rate of 3.9454 by 3.9 percent.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Matlow. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. Madam Attorney.
Thank you. Now our motion for approval of the city's tentative budget.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. Is there any discussion on the motion on the table? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. Madam Attorney.
Now for a motion for approval of the Downtown Improvement Authority's tentative millage rate of 1 mill as stated in Resolution Number 19-r-37.
Commissioner Matlow properly moves the recommendation, seconded by Commissioner Bryant. Any further comment on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. Madam Attorney.
Thank you. Now for a motion for approval of the Downtown Improvement Authority's tentative budget.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
It's been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Bryant. Seeing no further comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. Madam Attorney.
Thank you. Now our motion for approval of the negotiated healthcare rates with Capital Health Plan for fiscal year 2020. This is required pursuant to the CHP contract.
So moved.
Been properly moved by Commissioner Williams Cox and seconded by Commissioner Bryant. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. Madam Attorney.
To summarize, the City Commission has tentatively approved the millage rate for both the city and the DIA and the expenditures and obligations of the City of Tallahassee and the DIA for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2019, and ending September 30, 2020, designating the sources of revenue and appropriations. The titles to the resolutions setting forth the City Commission's approvals are as follows. Resolution Number 19-r-37, a resolution establishing the millage rate for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2019, and ending September 30, 2020, as 4.1 mills for the City of Tallahassee and 1 mill for the Downtown Improvement Authority, which is greater than the aggregate rollback rate of 3.9454 by 3.9 percent and providing an effective date. And Resolution Number 19-r-38, a resolution adopting the operating and capital budgets for the City of Tallahassee and the operating budget for the Downtown Improvement Authority for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2019, and ending September 30, 2020, designating the sources of revenue and said appropriations and providing an effective date. A public hearing on the final budget will be held Wednesday, September 25, 2019, at which time Resolution Number 19-r-37, setting the millage rate, and Resolution Number 19-r-38, setting the budget, will be approved. Continued upon commission action, the resolutions and required budget summary advertisement will be adjusted for all issues resolved as a part of this agenda item, and as well as the items approved during tonight's meeting that may affect the fiscal year 2020 budget. Separate from the approval of the City of Tallahassee and Downtown Improvement Authority tentative millage rates and tentative budgets, at this time, the City Commission is scheduled as a part of this agenda item to approve three proposed resolutions regarding solid waste rates and pass-through fees for growth management and the planning department. Are there any public speakers on these items?
Do we have any speaker cards?
We do not have any speakers on any of these three items.
Madam Attorney.
Thank you. The first of the three resolutions is Resolution R-19-33, adopting updated solid waste rates which reads as follows. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Tallahassee providing levels of service and rates for residential, multifamily tenant, and commercial, and commercial solid waste and recycling collection services, providing effective rates for such, I'm sorry, effective dates for such rates, providing an annual rate adjustment, and providing an effective date. I'd ask for motion for approval of Resolution 19-r-33, adopting the updated solid waste rates.
Been properly moved by Commissioner Diane Williams Cox, seconded by Commissioner Bryant. All those in favor? Any further, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. Madam Attorney.
The second of the three resolutions is Resolution 19-r-35, adopting growth management pass-through fees, which reads as follows. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, amending the Growth Management Department's schedule of permit and review fees and providing an effective date. I'd ask for a motion for approval of Resolution 19-r-35.
Recommended action has been moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Matlow. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. Madam Attorney.
The third and final of the three resolutions is Resolution 19-r-36, adopting updated planning department pass-through fees, which reads as follows. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, amending the planning department's schedule of fees, charges, and expenses, and providing an effective date. I'd ask for a motion for approval of Resolution 19-r-36.
Is there a motion on the table?
So moved.
Properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Matlow. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. Madam Attorney.
This concludes any required action on this agenda item.
Excellent. So moving forward from here, we will have the final public hearing on the proposed balanced budget at the September 25 meeting.
That is correct.
Upon its approval, then we will be ready for the fiscal year. Excellent. Mr. Manager, do we have anything else before us at the public hearing this evening?
No more public hearing items, sir.
Then this closes out the public hearing. We are back on to policy formation and direction, 13.05. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. 13.05 involves the contract for lobbying services. You'll recall, at your July 10 workshop, you directed us to issue an RFP for state lobbying services for this coming year, for the state efforts in that state legislative session. Committee meetings begin next week, and the session is early this year in January. The team did a good job moving swiftly on that, and RFP was issued. And the team has ranked Gray Robinson, PA, as the highest scored proposer, and we recommend your approval of their rankings. If approved, the contract will begin November 1, 2019, and end October 31, 2020, with no option to extend.
Say that one more time, I'm sorry.
The contract would begin November 1, 2019, and end October 31, one year, 2020. There would be no option to extend the contract.
Excellent. Do we have any speaker cards on this issue?
We have one speaker on this item, Erwin Jackson.
Dr. Jackson, thanks for sticking around.
Erwin Jackson, 1341, Jackson Bluff. I want to appreciate and encourage, strongly support the change that's been identified and recommended by the city manager. That might surprise you, but let me tell you why. And for the new commissioners, other than Curtis Richardson, he may know the history on this. I don't know this new contractor. I know he's going to be better than the last one. About 10 years ago, we had John Marks, had a young guy, Sean Pittman, be his campaign manager. John Marks won. In return, and to show his appreciation for his help, John Marks and his office decided to hire his campaign manager and make him lobbyist for the city. Mr. Pittman continued that role for several years. Four or five years ago, I came up here, talking about, that's not quite right, that's a payoff. Sean Pittman, John Marks, needs to spend his money, his campaign money, for Sean Pittman. He shouldn't be offering his campaign managers city contracts. You can be a city, you can be a, get a contract, or you can be a manager of a campaign, but you can't do both. Well, we spoke that publicly, and guess what happened? They went out, they got a new contractor. The new contract went to another person, and lo and behold, Sean Pittman runs over here, and he handles the city lobbying effort. So for the last 10 years, to keep this quiet, to show that there was no connection, well, obviously there is. Sean Pittman has been involved in numerous contracts through the city, and we have a serious problem. This is a great example to show us a problem that you new folks need to address. When you go out and hire an individual to run your campaign, they should be told, and we should have a city ordinance, which prevents them, if you're going to have a city, a city campaign manager, or you, or you, or anyone, then there should be an ordinance that says, if you're going to manage my campaign, mark down you will not get a city contract. That has to be a clear distinction. And as long as you allow those two things to happen, you have Scott Maddox, you have Andrew Gillum, and you have John Marks. And that's what I've been fighting for 10 years. And I'll give you a little update on some of those the next time I have a chance here under agenda speakers.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other speakers on this item?
We have no other speakers on this item.
Wonderful. We'll open it up for commission discussion.
Move acceptance of staff recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
Staff recommendation has been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem and seconded by Commissioner Matlow. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying?
Mr. Mayor, I did want to ask if we could ensure that the proclamation that we passed earlier is a part of our legislative agenda for this upcoming session on the covenant line.
Oh, yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. We are now on item 13.06.
City Auditor Sutton is going to introduce this item, sir.
Oh, Mr. Sutton, here we go.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Item 13.06 addresses the city's need to contract with a certified public accounting firm for the city's external audit services of their annual financial statements. As you know, in July, you directed staff to reissue the RFP. This agenda item brings back the results of that RFP. We recommend option number one, which provides for the highest ranked firm from the Audit Committee, which was more Stevens and Lovelace, and they were also the lowest cost bidder. Thank you.
Mr. Sutton, were there any problems with the process?
There were, there were no problems with the process.
Any questions about the process?
The only thing that happened was there was a change in state statute between the first RFP and the second RFP, and we were required to have a member of the governing body on the Audit Evaluation Committee. And Commissioner Richardson agreed to step up and fill that role. That was addressed in item 1103 earlier this evening.
Have there been any bid protest on this item?
There have been no protests.
In your professional opinion, it is a clean and fair RFP process.
Yes, sir.
Is there any speakers on this item, Mr. Clerk?
No, sir. Have one here if you all have questions, otherwise no speakers.
All right, say it one more time.
Have one here to answer questions if you have any from one of the firms, but otherwise, no speakers.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item before we move forward? Seeing none, we'll turn to commissioner discussion. Commissioners, colleagues?
Move staff recommendation.
Commissioner Matlow properly moves staff recommendation, seconded by Commissioner Bryant and Commissioner Williams Cox and the Mayor Pro Tem, it looks like. Any further comment?
I wasn't sure what I was supposed to do, so that's why I didn't.
I'd like to see the, see the firm, since they're here. So if I see them on the street, I'd know who they are.
Sir, your name and address for the record, please. Actually, hold on two seconds. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. If you'd like to introduce yourself in the firm, that'd be great.
Yes, sir. Bill Bland, Moore Stevens Lovelace, 307 West Park Avenue, Tallahassee, Florida. So I would be, I am the engagement shareholder based upon that vote that was just taken.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Any questions for me?
I think she just wanted to see your face.
Oh, okay. If she runs into you on the street.
That's right. It's hard to have a deal with somebody you don't know what they look like.
I was here last time and did speak at that previous meeting as well. So I'm, we're very happy to be on board, and we look forward to the relationship.
Are there other members of your team here?
No, not this evening. We weren't sure what was going to happen, but I wanted to make sure I was here.
They're watching on TV.
Exactly. If not, they will be watching. One good thing, I was able to get an audit procedure out of the way as seeing the budget process go through the first step.
There we go. How'd we do?
It's actually, you did well.
Excellent.
Actually, you're very lucky, not a lot of comments.
Dr. Jackson noted for the record that our external auditor said we did a wonderful job at the first step of the first public hearing this evening. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Look forward to working with you. Mr. Manager, do we have anything else under policy formation and direction?
No, sir.
We are going to now go to unengaged business and speakers. Mr. Clerk, do we have any cards?
We do have a few of those. One is Dr. Hollifield. I don't believe I see him.
Dr. Hollifield still with us? Let's move on.
He may have taken leave at the break. Erwin Jackson?
Dr. Jackson, welcome back.
He will be followed by Shane Brewster.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
I brought this poster board here that I had made. I made this in 2009. According to my calculations, it's about 2019. So for 10 years, I've been talking about corruption in City Hall, and I appreciate the four new commissioners. 2018 was a huge change and for the better. I want to mention that every city commissioner since 2009, not a one of them was willing to say, okay, Erwin, we'll look at this. Let's take, we just look at it. I didn't tell them to agree with me, look at it. Not a single commissioner had the courage, confidence, ethics to go forward. What they were willing to do, though, they were willing to call me a liar, mentally ill, a stalker. Maddox said he's going to give me butt whipping. I don't think that's going to happen anytime soon. Gil Ziffer said I was a doctor of futility. I said, the only thing that's, the futility is me coming up here and asking a bunch of crooks to be honest. He left. Nancy Miller left. Well, a lot of good things happened, but it was painful. I don't like being up here. But here's what happened. We had Gillum for his email stuff. We got our mayor at the time, he's out there with his mini, mini hooker. The scheme was outlined. And Curtis Richardson, honest to goodness, will you please tell me that you see now the dark clouds of corruption? will you please tell me that you see now the dark clouds of corruption? For two or three years, you never said, there are clouds. You sat in the middle of the mayor, Gillum, and the ex-mayor, Scott Maddox, and they formed the most corrupt commission in the history of our community. And we were led also by Rick Fernandez, and the commission at that time refused to fire him after this was known. Well, a private citizen shouldn't have to be filing ethics complaints and legal actions against crooks on his own city commission. Now we have the probable cause with Andrew Gillum. Well, the bottom line, the problem is this, our last city attorney who head for the hills, attorney Lou Shelley, I see no clouds hanging over the city of Tallahassee. If he didn't see the corruption, then he's part of it. Because my feeling, for every one of those commissioners who refused to at least look at the corruption, they're part of the corruption. Mr. Richardson, that would include you. And finally, we have this headline, corruption confirmed. Now, I want to tell you something, and I'll take just 15 seconds more, if you don't mind. I've been told, you talked about, let's look into all these different policies and contracts, Mr. Matlow, and I appreciate you for that, you're going to have to extend that work. My understanding is that our ex-mayor, Andrew Gillum, was indicted on criminal charges this past Tuesday. Those charges have been sealed. Along with Mr. Gillum, my understanding is his brother, Marcus, was also indicted. And also, we were talking here about this lobbying contract, there was a third person who's indicted on Tuesday, the contracts have been sealed, and his name is Sean Pittman.
Dr. Jackson, if you could wrap up your comments.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Do we have any other speakers?
We do. Shane Brewster.
Mr. Brewster, are you still here? Moving on?
Moving on. Richard Pelangi.
Mr. Pelangi? Great to see you. Thanks for being with us this evening.
Thank you.
Yeah, your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. I'm Richard Pelangi, and I live at 1300 North Duval Street, and I'm here for the Tallahassee Duplicate Bridge Club. And before I start, I'd like to thank each of you for meeting with us over the past several months. You were gracious enough to give us some time. We came in and explained, talked to you about Duplicate Bridge, and what we do, and what our needs are, and we very much appreciate the time that you gave us. Last week, we provided you with a petition that was signed by 151 of our 200 members, and the petition asks for your help in getting some recommendations approved for the new card and game room at the new senior center. And a contract is now being developed with an architectural firm, and our recommendations are not included. So time is kind of of the essence, and this is the time for, if we're going to make it, if our recommendations are going to be adopted, this is the time for it. We believe our recommendations are modest, they're reasonable, have very little financial cost, and it's appropriate for the city to adopt them. The city has designed facilities for the attack team and the serenas at the Truesdale Pool. It designed the Truesdale Gym for the tumbling tots, and you have a boxing club at the Leon County Lincoln Center, you have a gym for them. So you have a history of designing facilities for the use of community groups. And these facilities are used by others, but they were designed to meet the needs of the attack team, the serenas, tumbling tots, and the boxing club. And we're a similar group, we have similar stature in the community. We have 200 members, our constitution goes back to 1959 here in Tallahassee, so we're 60 years old. And we play very frequently, we have 30 games a month at the senior center. We play about 980 plays a month for our players. About 32 of our players play in each game, times 30 is almost 1,000 players come in to the senior center each month on North Monroe. So we're one of their largest, or they're, we are the largest group of regularly scheduled people that they have. Of great import- we have four recommendations, but I only want, I know your time is important tonight, and it's the end of the meeting, and I just want to highlight our most important recommendation to you. All of the ones are important, and they're in the material we gave you, and they're included in our petition, but the recommendation that is of the most importance is that we have a separate entrance to the parking lot with adjacent handicap spaces. We have at least 12 of our members have disabilities where they use canes, walkers, one with a wheelchair. A week ago today, at our game last Wednesday, seven of these members played. So at that time, we had a need for seven handicap places in the, at the senior center parking lot. They need to be in close, these spaces need to be in close proximity to the building. I don't need to tell you how hot it is in the summer, and the temperature in a parking lot can be 15, 20 degrees hotter than the official temperature because of the absorption of the heat by the asphalt. So we think that that is our most important, that's the recommendation that is mentioned most often to me when I talk to our members. That's the one that's of the most importance. And in closing, we request that you help us get our recommendations adopted, and we believe our bridge club provides quality and value to the city, and we look forward to holding our games in the new senior center. And thank you, and city manager, we want to thank you, because you're a key guy in this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
I have got to state for the record, if I don't, then my wife's grandmother, who basically runs the Bridge Club of Baton Rouge, Louisiana, would not allow me to go home for any of the holidays, that I have had a chance to review the recommendations, just like all you have as well, and if you would please take that in full consideration as we move forward, building the new facility. I think that they're pretty modest as well. We do have a track record, as it was brought up, and if we can make accommodations, please take that in consideration. I got to tell a funny story, too. I believe it was you, Diane, when we were going on our tour to all the different facilities as new commissioners and newly elected, and we're walking down the hallway of the senior center, and I think you said something, and I started laughing and cracking up, and do you remember, the Bridge Club was playing, and somebody came out in the hallway and said, you two need to be quiet, you're too loud, you're making too much noise. And Diane and I were like, well, hey, we're newly elected members of the city commission, they go, we don't care who you are, you're making too much noise, and we got to break it down at Dodge Stadium. So I appreciate the seriousness and the competition, and you did have a great crowd that day as well.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you very much.
Mr. Pelangi?
Mr. Manager.
Good to see you tonight. Thank you for coming and spending your time. I'll make sure we get more information on that. I'm glad you highlighted the senior center, the new senior center, and that we're underway in terms of progress. We're about to hire the architect, we'll do the design. I'll be honest with you, if it's up to Ashley Edwards, it might be a 10-story building with a million square feet. I say that in jest, because there's a lot of high hopes for it, and we will make sure we take your recommendations and the recommendations of the club seriously. I'll work with Ashley and her team, and also make sure that the commission gets full information in terms of where we're headed. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Clerk?
We have no other speakers at this time, Mayor.
All right, last call for anybody to speak on unengaged items before this body. Seeing none, that's great. Let's move into city commission information and sharing of ideas. Commissioner Bryant, we'll start with you, and just work our way down.
Fantastic. I have a couple items. First of all, especially for those who are viewing, I know if you saw in the consent agenda, that the schedule for our commission meetings, and if you just looked at the schedule, it appeared that they would all be in chambers, but they are not. So I want to emphasize the fact that we still will be going out into the community for several of our commission meetings. And secondly, I would like to ask us, as we move into this year, and we get past our second and final vote on the budget, that we start immediately to plan, I think we've already started this process as it relates to the CHSP and to the direct grants. I think we talked about putting into place some criteria that further defines the structured process versus the grants that we give out. I want to make sure that, and I'll continue to bring this up until we get to a place where I know that we have paid specific attention to that, such that when we get to our next budget cycle, we'll be in a better position. Those are my comments for tonight.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Bryant. Commissioner Williams Cox?
You're going to give me a promotion. You know, I talk a lot, but I'm not there yet. Couple of things, since Commissioner Bryant mentioned the commission meetings being in the community, I wanted to make sure that we put Hartsfield Elementary School on the list as being one of the places that we take our city commission meeting. Some of you may have heard, Hartsfield Coral Group has been invited for a second year to come to Carnegie Hall, and they need to raise $65,000 to do it. And I promised those babies that we would make that happen, because if they go to Carnegie Hall, Tallahassee goes to Carnegie Hall. And so I told them that I would, we were going to get that money, and we were going to challenge every elected official, not just the ones in the room, but those who are watching, to make a contribution. It is a tax-deductible contribution, you make your contribution to the Leon County Schools Foundation, and you can go to their website and go to the bottom, and you will find, go in line for 65, that's Hartsfield Elementary School, that's where it's listed. I want to also extend that to the appointed officials as well, to make a contribution, to let's get these kids to Carnegie Hall, they deserve it. And given some of the things that have happened this weekend, we want to promote this behavior as much as possible, and we want to get in there early, so that they're singing and playing instruments instead of doing other stuff. Secondly, I want to remind everyone about the French Town Get Down. As you know, French Town Get Down happens on the Friday night before a FAMU home game, and FAMU's first home game is on Saturday. And so the French Town Get Down is Friday night, I believe it starts at, I can't remember.
6 o'clock?
6, is it 6? But you'll find it, just go on down to French Town and get down, and have a good time. And finally, we have been presented, I've been presented, on behalf of representing our city commission, an opportunity with Cumulus Broadcasting to do a weekly two-to-three-minute segment during drive time to talk about the happenings in Tallahassee on 98.3 FM, which is a gospel station, but they want to make sure that their listeners are, if they're not able to attend meetings and they're not watching, they want to be able to inform them of some of the things that are going on in the city commission. And I want to thank the best communications director, my favorite communications director, Allison Ferris, for helping me get this information, so that I can go over to Cumulus and read it and record it, because I told her I want facts, I don't want my emotions, I want facts, and it's been well received, I've heard very, very good things, and so, thank you, Allison. It runs on Mondays at 4:00 PM during drive time on 98.3 FM. So big shout-out to the Cumulus family, to Ms. Dot Ely, and that crew, and Ms. Monique is the radio personality that approached me with this, and it happens during her show. So that's Mondays at 4:00 PM, 98.3 FM. And it's called, Allison did this, too, it's called Take Five Tallahassee. So we give them five things that happened in Tallahas- that's happening in Tallahassee or has happened in Tallahassee, positive things.
That's great. Commissioner Matlow?
Yeah, thank you. First off, I want to echo Commissioner Bryant's point about the outside agency funding and lining up that process. I know we have a workshop on the CHSP process coming up, and to just get it done early, so we can tell people what the process is before we get into it, so thank you for those comments. I also wanted to start a conversation, there's been a lot of, I guess, confusion lately around marijuana in our community. 75% of our community voted for medical marijuana when it was on the ballot. I think there's three different amendments that may come on the 2020 ballot related to the legalization of marijuana, and really, I guess what I'm looking for is clarity in our community. The state attorney has indicated, due to the confusion in testing with hemp and CBD and some of the other products, that it's difficult for him to actually bring charges. And I think essentially, the politics just haven't caught up with the will of the people yet, and we're in this gray area, and I think in two, four, six years, you know, we won't have to worry about it, and there'll be clear direction from our state government, or possibly even our federal government. But being in this gray area, I think it's important for us, with some people having access to medical marijuana, other people not, some people having access to hemp products, and some people using other products, that we just bring clarity to what our position is. And I like to work with our sheriff's office and our county, they're having a similar conversation. Other communities around Florida have looked at misdemeanor possession, 20 grams or less, Alachua, Broward, Palm Beach, nine other municipalities, and just making it strictly a civil penalty. And I'd like to see us move into a direction where we can just say, if you're only in possession of 20 grams or less, or the paraphernalia associated with it, and you're not committing any other crime, that we get to a point where there's zero arrests for those amounts, because I think the consequences of those arrests are devastating, and there's an imbalance in the fairness of the types of possession and the substance. So I'd like to have this conversation come back later, maybe in October, to see, we have a diversion program, get updates, I've been trying to get information about how many people actually fit into that category, and it's largely unclear right now to see, I don't know if we're talking about 50 people, 100 people, or 1,000 people, so to have that information, come back, see what other communities are looking at, and try to get community-wide support on no arrests for 20 grams or less.
Sounds great. Is that in the form of a motion?
Yeah, can I make that, is that too complicated for a motion, just the overall conversation?
I think we both understand what you're referring to.
Yeah, I think it'd be a great conversation. Can, I'm sorry. Hold on just a second, second to the motion? I'll second it. I'll second it. Commissioner Williams Cox, come back to the mayor pro temp. Commissioner Bryant?
I'm good. I think that it's going to be very important that we bring the state attorney into this conversation, and I think that it would be great to bring him to the next commission meeting, to tell us what is happening in the circuit, so that we're consistent. My concern is, I don't want us to do something that works here, but you drive over to Quincy, and now you're in trouble. So I want to make sure that we're doing something that's going to be consistent, and I think the state attorney is, can provide us with information to help us understand what they are doing, so that we're in line and locked sync with them. So if we can just invite him to, him or a representative, to come to our next commission meeting to provide us with some information.
Well, I think he would be part of the discussion at the meeting that you're talking about, right, Commissioner Matlow?
Yeah, I mean, I think we just need to rally community support and all be on the same page, so.
Commissioner Williams Cox, are you comfortable with that, or do you want the state attorney to come at a separate meeting? If we invite the state attorney, and do we need to invite the police chief and the sheriff and everyone else, or would you just do one meeting and bring everybody together for that conversation?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't understand, what was the meeting you're referring to?
Do you want me to try to summarize?
Sure. I'm not quite sure what he just said.
Okay, okay.
So I think Mr. Matlow wants to go down two tracks. One, he wants to see a survey of what other jurisdictions are doing, and then he wants, if possible, a breakout of information as to what is actually going on in the city of Tallahassee. That is, how many people are being arrested for 20 grams or less of marijuana? So I think the city manager's staff can work on the information regarding, you know, what people are actually charged with. I think they might be able to drill down to that through the police department, and certainly, I can provide the information on a survey of what other jurisdictions are doing. And certainly, we can also invite the state prosecutor to come and be at that meeting, or anyone else you would like for me to invite.
Great.
Okay, I just want to make sure that the public has the benefit of hearing it from the state attorney's mouth, not translated, not filtered, but I want them to see and hear him say what he's saying, because I don't want anything to be lost in the translation to add to the confusion.
Sounds great. Mr. Mayor pro temp?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's certainly a conversation worth having, based on what is occurring around the state, and definitely around the country, with respect to marijuana laws, I would certainly want to make sure that we have extensive community conversation and input, and if there is anything that we're going to do, that it reflects the values of our community, and what our community, and what we determine is best for the city of Tallahassee with that kind of extensive community conversation and input. But I certainly think it's a conversation worth having and would encourage us to move forward with that.
Excellent. Sounds great. So, let me ask for the city attorney to make sure to clarify the motion on the table that we'll vote on. Make sure we're on the same page.
As I understand it, at a commission meeting, and I believe sometime in October, perhaps some assistance from the city manager in terms of timing, we would have the, we would invite the state attorney as well as other members of the community so that there can be a community somewhat information session on marijuana, also to provide information in an agenda item on what other jurisdictions are doing in this area, and then also, if possible, to break out some of the statistics that we have in terms of whether or not people are actually being charged only with possession of marijuana of 20 grams or less and an associated paraphernalia.
Excellent. Commissioner Matlow made the motion. I seconded the motion. Any further comment? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. Commissioner Matlow, you still have floor?
It's not 12:30 yet, so I'm having a good night, and I'll pass it down the line.
I don't have anything, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. Couple of things. First of all, I would love to suggest, you tell me if it's in a formal motion or not, you know, healthcare and mental health is a big issue in our community, and I think, number one, it would serve a very positive message, but I think it would be very educational if we could put together a tour of the neighborhood center, the Bond Center, and the Appalachia Mental Health Center. And I just wanted to see if that is something that the commission is interested in doing. I don't know, the last time you have visited neighborhood or Bond or Appalachia, I want to throw that out, just to gauge interest. If not, you're not going to hurt my feelings, but I wanted to throw that out there.
I like, I like that, because we obviously have a mental health issue in our community, but I want to also make sure that when we do, if we do this, we need someone to talk to us about our kids and the kind of things that they're seeing and what they're going through. As you know, we've had issues with suicide, and we're also having issues with gunplay that we need to wrap our arms around, and we need to, for those who are listening, children, please put those guns away, and parents, put your guns away so that they can't get them. We need to talk about it and learn how, learn to do some conflict resolution, so not let it just be a tour to see what's going on, but we need some action regarding conflict resolution, and we want to ask our mental health providers and healthcare providers to help us, you know, fix this.
Excellent. So, do we need a formal motion? I mean, this is not necessarily an action item. It's more of, I'm asking staff, for those that, I know you are very well-educated on the health and everything, so.
Two psychologists.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
But I do think that, I would enjoy it. I know that. So, maybe to put together a tour of the neighborhood.
Mr. Mayor, we'd love to.
The Bond, Appalachia, and for anybody in senior staff that would want to go, and yeah, that'd be great.
We'd love a tour.
That'd be great.
Oh, Star Metro.
That'd be great.
And we will use Star Metro. Yes, sir. We've got good direction. Thank you.
Excellent. Number two, colleagues, I have another mayor-chairchair meeting coming up. In light of all the recent events that's been going on and ongoing, quite honestly, and I spoke to the chairman of the county commission today, and I spoke to the superintendent, we've all agreed that although we might have had other issues that we wanted to bring up for discussion, we're basically going to scrap the agenda and concentrate on violent crime during this particular meeting. And Chief Outlaw, if the chief is still here, I haven't had a chance to speak to you yet, but the intention is to invite also the police chief, the sheriff, the state attorney, and those that need to be at that table. So, you can help educate us where we are, where we need to go, how we work with our respective boards. Anyway, that conversation is going to take place, and we are scheduled, Mr. Manager, for that mayor-chair meeting, I believe, in two weeks. We've all agreed that if we can, reschedule for early next week, where the first opportunity that we can all get together, we should do that. So, if you could reach out to your counterparts and see if we can make that happen, I just wanted to make, and of course, you are always welcome to come and see the meeting and how it operates and everything, but I just wanted to make sure that you knew that that was our intentions moving forward. Finally, at the next meeting, I believe we have, and Mr. Manager, I want you to walk us through the ethics package schedule for this fall, because this is a very important issue to all of us. There's been questions in the public on how we're moving forward. Will you please bring us up to speed on what are, what's the timing moving forward from here?
Yes, sir. Thank you for that opportunity. I think that's good to get this out there. So, the Ethics Board has forwarded a list of recommended ordinance changes and policy changes for your consideration. The city attorney has been working to gather background information on that over the summer, so there's been work happening, and I recommended a schedule last week or so to you that there be an agenda discussion at your next meeting on September 25th, whereby the city attorney can provide an update. I think it would also be helpful for the treasurer clerk to provide background on the Ethics Board and that history. I think that would be really helpful. You also have shared a number of ideas about changes over the last number of months. I think it would be important to identify those and make sure that we've got those levels set as we're considering them, and I think that would set itself up well for a workshop, which we have scheduled for October 28th. I was referencing my calendar. I believe it's a morning timeframe, a 9:00 AM workshop, to then further discuss those issues. And so, the next steps would be a discussion on 9:25, followed by a workshop on August 28, and then that could culminate into decisions that would be done before the end of the calendar year. As you deal in ordinance changes, of course, that takes a couple of meetings. There's a process to that, and I believe, based on that timing, you could get any action that you see fit done by the end of the year. I would ask you, just as a matter of protocol, I think it would be appropriate to invite the board chair to your September 25th meeting. With your permission, and on your behalf, I will invite the board chair if that suits you.
Yes, please. I think that is very appropriate, and to, you know, continue to have a great working relationship with the Ethics Board. Please invite the chair to the next meeting. A couple of other things on this topic as well, because we have all been diving into the recommendations that not only the Ethics Board has made, that we have made, and the public has made. And it's nothing that I want to get into this evening, but I want to go ahead and be transparent in my thought process. I have concerns with some of the processes associated with the Ethics Board before audits are filed, I mean, before an actual ethics complaint is filed. I have grave concerns over due process. I have grave concerns over merits that are met or not met, which trigger the next steps in certain processes. The more I dig in on the bylaws, now, remember the recommendations that have come to us deal with ordinance change. This is also me now looking in, and I get more and more and more questions. I have questions on the structure of the office. We don't have jurisdiction over that, but I think it's worth having the conversation while we have the chairman of the Ethics Board with us as well. We have a full-time ethics officer. We have office support staff. We have an attorney. Explain to me the budget. Explain to me how the office works. Explain to me the day-in-and-day-out operations of the Ethics Office and how this works, because the more I look and the more I dig, the more questions I have. Mr. Manager, I am very interested, as we move forward, one of the recommendations is expanded jurisdiction from the Ethics Office. I'm interested in knowing, have we ever considered an inspector general position? Has the board ever considered an inspector general position? How does that impact all of our staff? I think that we need to be deliberate. I hear time and time again, members of the Ethics Board saying, "You got to pass this, you got to pass this, you got to pass this." And my response, as of tonight as well, is, we're going to be deliberate, we're going to do it right. We might agree with everything, we might agree with nothing and come up with other recommendations, but it's going to be done right. I also am interested in knowing, has the Ethics Board ever been audited for process? Now, not in a negative light. We audit almost every single department of the city of Tallahassee at some point or another. We audit all of our procedures at some point or another, and since the creation of the Tallahassee Ethics Board, has an audit ever been conducted on the Ethics Office and the processes? I don't think so, but I'm looking for an answer to that question. And if we move forward with an audit, what does that look like? Because technically speaking, the city auditor falls under the jurisdiction that the Ethics Board ever sees. I would imagine that this would be something that the external auditor could also look at, but these are all the kind of things that I'm thinking about, that I want to be upfront in the public and transparent of what I'm thinking about. So, as we also consider all of the recommendations that came to us, I'm looking forward to these conversations as well. Sometimes it get a little uncomfortable. I get it. But our job is to do it right, to make sure that at the end of the day, the package is very firm but fair. And I am told, I intend to work with you on this and make sure, we all campaigned on it, we've been talking about it for a while, and quite honestly, I'm excited about this commission passing a very strong, firm, but fair ethics package. With that, I have nothing else. If there is nothing else for the good of the order, we stand adjourned.